All right, we are getting ready to go this evening. We have some special guests up here who are going to gavel the meeting to order. All righty, we've got Beatrice to start off. You ready, Bee?
Yeah.
All right, let's do it. All right, there's one. Let's keep on going. Is that Nora? No, that's not Nora. That's Vivian. All right, Vivian. All right, Hannah, you give a shot? All right, Evie, you want to do a shot?
Yes.
How about you, Nora? Your turn. You want to take a whack? You don't want to do a whack? Oh, my goodness. Good lord, girl. All right, nice work. How about Nora? You want to give it a try? One more try. Here's your turn. Just right on that. Wow, good job. All right, congratulations to all our helpers today. All right, why don't you guys head on down? And I know a couple of them are going to be speaking this afternoon or this evening, so we're going to look forward to that. But in the meantime, why don't I give each of you all a pen? Hang on, guys. Here's a pen for you. There's one for you. There's one for you. There's one for you. And there's one for you. And why don't you guys head on down? And we'll hear from you guys in just a minute, okay? Maybe you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in just a moment, okay? Would you guys do that? All right, so anyway, welcome to you all. Welcome to the Monday, October 28th, 2019, Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted to have you all here with us this evening. And we are going to have maybe our young friends lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys want to do that for us? You ready? So why don't we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag is up here, okay? You guys ready? Go for it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good job, everybody. Good job. So let's go ahead and do roll, Madam Clerk, if we could.
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder is away on work travel. Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, welcome to you all. Thanks for coming out this evening. We will start, if we can, with adoption of the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We have several proclamations this evening, which are very exciting. The first of which relates to Live Local, which is a promotion for city businesses, which has been done for several years, I believe. Now, I've got the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce here and Mr. Lichtenhouse, who's been heavily involved with this as well. And so I'm going to ask him to read the proclamation, if I could.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the city of Falls Church is proud to join with the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce to encourage residents to take the Live Local pledge and patronize local businesses in Falls Church, and whereas local businesses in the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce are challenging residents and businesses to pledge to keep 20% more of their spending in the city of Falls Church during the month of November 2019. And whereas living local creates prosperity because of the multiplier effect, when local people choose to buy products and services from local businesses, creating diverse job opportunities and strengthening the city's overall economy. And whereas shopping, eating, playing, creating, and doing business in the city adds to the local tax revenue base, which supports city schools, roads, and other city services. And whereas living local can be healthier for the environment because doing business locally often results in less traffic congestion and pollution. And whereas living local can be healthier for residents because it makes daily activities less stressful and encourages walking to local businesses. And whereas living local supports neighbors and local businesses while also building stronger relationships and a sense of community. And whereas living local helps to strengthen and preserve the fabric of Falls Church's unique business community while attracting new businesses to serve local residents and the community at large.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as Live Local Month in the city of Falls Church, and urge all residents to take the Live Local pledge, attend some of the many Live Local events offered by local businesses during the month, and participate in the Live Local campaign by tagging local businesses and events on social media.
So before we have Ms. Cole come up to say a few remarks, I believe Mr. Lichtenhouse has a few things he'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a few prepared remarks here about this particular campaign. So last year, we kicked off the Live Local campaign formally with a proclamation similar to this one. And it was in partnership with the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce. And our businesses really took center stage as we encouraged residents and the businesses themselves to look for opportunities to spend more locally. And those efforts really paid off. The latest report from our city manager and CFO shows that our sales and meals tax revenues exceeded our budgeted expectations by more than $750,000 for fiscal year 2019. And to put that into perspective, that surplus amount is the equivalent of about two cents on the tax rate, four times the total amount that we spend in a year to remove snow and ice. It's about half the fiscal year 2020 materials and supplies budgeted line item for the schools. And it's about five times our formal neighborhood traffic calming budget. But more importantly, that money has contributed to the overall $2.6 million surplus we have from fiscal year 2019. And that money can and should be used, in part, to reinvest in activities and projects that benefit the businesses that pay those taxes to begin with. Money to solve for parking challenges, streetscape improvements, and business district marketing through our Economic Development Department. I, along with my fellow council members, believe that our city's future is bright as it always has been, and that with each year, success will beget success. But I know we also believe that this only happens through our collective efforts as a community. This Live Local campaign and last year's success shows exactly what kind of difference we can make for our businesses and residents if we all choose to rally behind a common cause. Living local isn't just about promoting our local businesses. It is also a reflection of the kind of community we strive to be: inclusive, vibrant, walkable, and dynamic. Congratulations to the chamber, the city, and our community for a successful inaugural Live Local campaign in 2018, and best wishes for a smashing success in year two.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you for your tireless efforts promoting Live Local and local businesses. We greatly appreciate it. We've got Mr. Painter and Ms. Cole, and we welcome your comments and thoughts as well. And thank you for your good work for our community.
Thank you all very much for this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, especially Councilmember Lichtenhouse. Pretty much said everything I was going to say. So, thank you. We were very pleased with our campaign last year, our social media campaign. And we were especially pleased to learn of the surplus this year that we are happy to take partial credit for. We will conduct our Live Local Falls Church campaign again this November to encourage people to shop, eat, and do business locally, and to share their experiences through social media with the hashtag #LiveLocalFC. We will use the frames that we used last year along with the tent cards to try to encourage photography and sharing of social media. And we are also, this year, going to be introducing, thanks largely to Councilmember Letty Hardy and her bingo idea, a bingo sheet, which will be available online, which encourages people to enjoy drinks with friends, visit a local service provider, stock up on groceries, splurge on something, and meet a local business owner. So we're very excited about this new addition. Additionally, we'll be hosting Bright Lights in the Little City, a community celebration of the business community and Live Local Month. That will take place Friday, November 15th, at the State Theater. You all are invited. You should have invitations, and we hope you will join us. We also hope you'll participate in the Live Local campaign. We would love to surpass our results from last year and make this year even more successful. More information will be shared later this week in the Falls Church News Press and on social media. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Painter? Did you have anything you wanted to say as well? Are you the sign holder for today?
Moral support. He's going to go on later.
All right, you guys want to come up and get the proclamation? Hold that over the Vice Mayor's head, that little sign thing there? Come on up.
He wants to be in the frame. There we go. All right. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, everybody. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all. We appreciate all the great work you do in Falls Church. And to Ms. Hardy and Mr. Lichtenhouse, thanks for your work on this proposal or this project. Let's move on to our next proclamation, which relates to Native American Heritage Month. And Ms. Hardy will do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the history and culture of our nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and Indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians and Alaskan natives have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the entire month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities, have been planned. And whereas, it is important to recognize the contributions of American Indians and Alaskan natives who served in the armed forces at five times the national average. And whereas, this observance is also a time to acknowledge the many American Indians and Alaskan natives who are members of federal, state, local, and tribal law enforcement and who sacrificed their safety for the security of all.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Falls Church, and ask residents to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Do we have anyone here from the audience to receive this proclamation? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Lynn Sherlock from the Falls Church Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And one of the important recognition that we, as a society, like to do is to honor the original Americans. And we have, I know we have others that are in the audience that I certainly would welcome to come up that have, you know, ancestors or that are part of the Native American tribes. We actually have a member who, from our chapter, who has the flu, who was unable to make it tonight, who is a Native American. And if you'll give me just an additional minute, I actually received this magazine in the mail that I get from the Library of Virginia in Richmond. And it just so happens that on the front page is they're celebrating as well the First Virginians. And as it is, when you read through a lot of historical documents, you continually get more information every single thing that you read. And there's two points in here that I thought was pretty fascinating, in that in the state of Virginia, there was the Virginia Racial Integrity Act of 1924, which basically said if you were going to get a birth certificate or death certificate, recognition could only be of two categories: white and colored. So Native Americans who were getting birth certificates were not getting certified as such. That obviously got resolved, but in the meantime, there were some people that did not get recognized with their heritage as they were growing up. But I will say, on January 29th in 2018, a bill was signed into law granting federal recognition to six Virginia Indian tribes, and I won't name all of them, but it took all the way until 2018 to be able to get that recognition. So thank all of you for allowing us to honor the First Virginians. And so I would invite fellow chapters of the Daughters of American Revolution here in Falls Church and any others to accept this proclamation.
Sure, that'd be great. Come on down.
And Ed, if you would like to say a few words, that would be great.
Yeah, I recognize part of my heritage as a Native Virginian as well, as documented in by Vincent Firesight. And the tribal affiliations would be the Tuxanit or the Doge, which is a Northern Virginia tribe, as well as the Rappahannock. So I applaud this proclamation that Lynn is proposing.
All right, well, come on down. We'll maybe take a photo here and appreciate your work. Come on down. And our final proclamation relates to Veterans Day, and I believe Mr. Z is going to do the honors. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation declaring November 11, 2019, is Veterans Day in the city of Falls Church. Whereas throughout the history of the United States, men and women in uniform have risked their lives to protect the country's interests and defend our freedoms, and whereas we live in freedom because of the contributions and sacrifices made by those who have served and by those who continue to serve. And whereas these sacrifices are also made by the family members, who support the men and women who preserve the liberties and enrich the nation. And whereas the United States of America has long stood as a beacon of hope and opportunity and the spirit by the members of the armed forces, the soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, and Coast Guard, who are part of an unbroken chain of brave patriots who have served our country with honor and made tremendous sacrifices so that we may live free. And whereas on Veterans Day, we remember that we are forever indebted to those who step forward to defend the blessings of liberty. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations to commemorate the occasion, including the annual Veterans Day ceremony, which will be held on November 11 at 11:00 a.m. in front of the community center.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as Veterans Day in the city of Falls Church, and urge all residents to recognize the sacrifices of those who served and continue to serve our nation as members of the U.S. military.
Do we have any folks, any veterans here in the audience? All veterans of any sort are welcome to come forward and be a part of this proclamation.
Sir, I stand before you as a 29-year veteran of the United States Air Force. And Bob Smith was going to be here today, but he also has the flu, so I think it's going around. But the Greater Falls Church Veterans Council is the one who presented, requested this proclamation today, and he called me and asked me if I would do the speaking honors. So thank you very much for the recognition for those who have served and are continuing to serve. And I do invite anyone with military experience, as well as anyone who has a family member that might be deployed or involved at all with the military, to join me in accepting this proclamation. And I need my ladies from the DAR as well.
All right, come on down. Thank you so much for your service to our country. We greatly appreciate it. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any oaths of office to administer this evening?
I don't believe there are.
All right, then we're going to move on to the receipt of public comment. Why don't you start with a receipt of written comments?
Mr. Edwin Henderson, on behalf of the Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation, requested that a portion of any FY19 surplus be used to fund Martin Luther King Day events and projects to enhance tourism. And I know that he's here to speak shortly. Barbara Carrington, Betsy Sharon, Julie Caston, Greg Lauer, Callie Hawkins, Helen Smith, wrote in support of the Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation's request for funding for an historic mural district. Dan Ross got into that list, but he actually wrote about the library, so we'll take him off there. Mary Chavez suggested limiting shared mobility devices to bike trails, bike paths on streets and smaller streets. Amaya Franklin provided thoughts on the number of scooters allowed for the pilot program. The Village Preservation and Improvement Society provided comments on shared mobility devices and asked council to take action before January 1st, 2020, to avoid falling under the default state legislation. They also requested a seat on the Stormwater Task Force. Dave Gustafson of 302 West Columbia provided a request regarding the scope of the Trammell Branch Water Sted modeling project. Todd Friedlander of 801 Hillwood Avenue asked that citizen input continue to be considered when modeling stormwater use studies and provided detailed modeling comments. Kenneth George of 800 Berry Street wrote about cut-through traffic on Berry Street. And Dan Ross forwarded questions about the library project and suggested reconsidering it in light of increased costs.
All right, thank you very much. We're now going to move on to receipt of public comment. If you'd like to speak this evening, you're more than welcome to. What I would ask that you would do is please fill out a speaker slip in the back of the room and hand it to the clerk over there. When you do speak, please state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes. When the beep goes off, that means your three minutes are up. And as a courtesy to the others in the room who want to speak, we'd ask that if you could, please keep your comments, again, to that three-minute time limit. We've got a fair amount of speakers this evening, so let's get started. I know some of you had children. I'm going to try to get through the folks who have brought children this evening first so they can head home and let their kids get a good night's sleep. Our first speakers are Beatrice and Hannah, and any of your sisters. If you want to bring them down as well, come on down.
Hello, our names are Beatrice Lichtenhouse.
And Hannah Rosenbush.
We are here today to discuss what our idea is to rebuild the Fellow's property. We would like to ask you to turn it into a farm for use by the community and schools, but we would like to help run the farm too. But before we get started, I want to ask you if you care about your children, and you want them to have a good education, right? And learning about animals and plants is a major learning block in schools. Now you know why it's important through education. First, we should use the produce from the farm for the school's cafeterias. This allows me and my classmates to enjoy fresh produce. Second, and the most important, part of our farm is the community helping out as volunteers. We could have different activities, such as Community Gardening Day, or a day to explore the farm, the gardens, the pens, and the barn. Finally, I am a member of the Falls Church 4-H and raise rabbits. Bee loves animals, has chickens, and wants to be a veterinarian. This farm allows us to enjoy our passion for animals and spending time outside. Thank you for listening and enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, thank you, guys, for speaking. Great job. You guys are great speakers. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Mr. Painter, Andrew Painter.
It's hard to follow that, Mr. Mayor.
Evie, do you want to join your dad up there?
Do you want to come up? Do you want to stand? So I'm joined by my daughter Eve Painter tonight. A little shy, but she helped bang in the gavel. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Andrew Painter. I'm a zoning attorney with the law firm of Walsh-Kaluchi. I did jot down a couple of comments after the fact related to Live Local Month, but I'm here this evening to talk about a new document called our Public Policy Position Statement. And we have copies of the document for all the council members. But in conjunction with the Live Local proclamation just adopted, the Falls Church Chamber does stand ready to support the Live Local proclamation, to promote local business, not just in November, but I think all the months of the year. We do believe that doing so adds local tax revenue and business income. It obviously builds a sense of community, and it creates relationships, and it fosters economic prosperity and well-being in the greater Falls Church community. Over the past 16 months or so, and as part of our chamber's public advocacy efforts at all levels of government, we've been compiling a set of, excuse me, public policy positions on a variety of issues that are important to our members. And we have appropriately titled it "Our Public Policy Position Statement." It has taken a great deal of introspection. We've been digging deep to discover the causes that are important to us and who we are as an organization. And the impetus for creating the document really came from two lines of thought. First, that our chamber's business community really should be a stakeholder in the development of policies and regulations that affect businesses here in Falls Church. And second, from a general consensus from our own members, that we have never set forth all of our policies into a single unified document, and that most of our advocacy had to date consisted of sort of an ad hoc basis of dusting off of prior letters and public policy documents. So this document now represents that single written statement, and it's meant to inform all of our members and our public as to the position that we have on a variety of issues to stimulate civic thought and debate and aid in the development of sound public policy. So when you flip through this document, what you will see are our policies related to things such as economic development, land use and zoning, diversity, inclusion, and immigration, the environment, and education, and more. And all these policies were not developed in the vacuum. We debated them heavily, rigorously. They were first approved by the chamber's Legislative Committee, and they were recommended to the Board of Directors. And we had some serious disagreements about what to include and what not to include. Why would we want to, you know, why we would want to stake a position on a certain topic and go on record or avoid it altogether? But in the end, it really is the product of consensus. It does not represent the views of any individual chamber member or partner for the chamber, but it does exist as a unified statement of our organization as a whole. And like everything, the development of public policy is an ongoing process. We intend to review our positions annually to reflect new issues and the context of the day. You have the copies in front of you. We would welcome your review as well. I do thank you very much for your time. Go Nats! That is also an official public policy of our chamber. They need it. And always remember to live local. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate it. By the way, that beep you just heard was an Amber Alert, so when you get out, leave the meeting, you might want to take a look and see if you might have any information in that regards. Our next speaker is Nikki Graves-Henderson. Okay, Ed Henderson, you want to talk? All right, sure.
Yes, Ed Henderson, 307 South Maple Avenue. I like your new digs. This is great. First time I'm here. I want to talk about some ideas that Tinnerhill has regarding the surplus and how it can be used. How can we make Falls Church a destination instead of a drive-thru? How can we make Falls Church history an economic driver? We should think of our history as an asset and an economic driver. Alexandria tourism industry has tripled in the past 50 years. In 1969, $42 million of Alexandria's economy was attributed to tourism. That's $287 million today, adjusted for inflation. Alexandria's tourism revenue of $859 million is triple that amount. Travel also supports 6,500 jobs, 7% of the workforce. How much does Falls Church tourism industry bring into the city? Can anybody tell me? Might that be because we don't really have a tourism bureau? We don't really have any tourism staff? And I think that we should have some to take advantage of this industry, which could be an economic driver. Okay. Our overall vision is tap into tourism. Make Falls Church an economic driver by promoting its history through a mural project, history underfoot sidewalks. Tours would begin at the Blacksmith Shop, welcoming education center. That would be at the Falls Church Episcopal. Sidewalks. Recently, the city allocated $40,000 for an economic, for sidewalks in front of my house on South Maple Avenue. Okay, I think that was short-sighted. I think we need to expand that so that we actually complete the sidewalks on both sides of South Maple Avenue. Reason why? We have two new developments down there in the last 10 years or so. It means about 1,000 people. It's much more, we talk about walkability. How can you talk about walkability if you don't have sidewalks? So that should be something that we should expand on that $40,000 and put some more money in the sidewalks on South Maple. Also, number two, I'd like to talk about the Blacksmith Shop as a welcoming center, which is the brick-in building on East Fairfax Street, which is where the Blacksmith Shop used to be. And I talked with persons at the Falls Church Episcopal. They said $150,000 would be needed in order to do that. I'm not sure of that exact amount, but a study should be done to try to figure that out. We also need more money for parks and rec. I talked to the director, and he said his budget has not increased since 2012. However, there's, every year, there's more demand, particularly for special events, such as the Tinnerhill event, the Martin Luther King Day. And closing down the, okay, my time's up. I would like to introduce others from the Social Justice Committee to speak more about the mural project, which I had no time to introduce.
Sure, that's fine. All right. So I've got, if they've filled out speaker slips, I'm going to get to them. They're welcome to go ahead and go in whatever order you might want to do, but I do have a stack of slips. And the next speaker I have is Betsy Chirara? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah.
All right.
Hi, I'm Nikki Graves-Henderson, and I also live at 307 South Maple Avenue. Thank you for giving us the time this evening to share some of our ideas, which are consistent with everything everyone has said tonight, Mr. Painter. Mr. Painter, Ross, everybody is talking the same thing, a livable community, and a community that is thoughtfully figuring out ways to benefit from our assets. Our assets, one of which is a history that's very little known. And we've come up with, we've been working for, actually, we've been working on this project since 2002. And I'd like to introduce some of our committee members, who'll give you some information about the things that we're talking about doing, and we hope that you will support. And then I'll kind of wrap it up. Sue and Helen.
Helen Smith, 2958 Strathmead Street, Falls Church. Tinner Hill Heritage Foundation, Making History Visible. Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. To covet truth is a very distinguished passion, George Santiano. The history, African-American life in Falls Church predates the 1700s. Enslaved and free African-Americans lived, worked, too often as enslaved labor, struggled and prospered for generations before the Civil War. The Tinner Hill community began right after the Civil War, when Charles and Elizabeth Tinner purchased land and divided it among their nine children. The Tinner's outstanding craftsmen and highly skilled stonemasons in the 19th century created a solid and thriving community, which remarkably continues today. The Tinner Hill neighborhood is a noteworthy array of vernacular homes dating from the late 19th and early 20th centuries, owned and occupied primarily by Tinner descendants. The persistent survival of the Tinner Hill community is cause enough to revere this place, but one event provides an even greater reason. In 1915, on this site, in the home of Joseph and Mary Tinner, nine African-American men met to plan how they could defeat a proposed ordinance that would segregate Falls Church, forcing all African-American families to live in a small designated area of town. These men, joined by other male and female members of the Black community, pooled their resources, hired lawyers, and filed a lawsuit. They petitioned the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, newly founded in 1909 to become a chapter. Calling themselves the Colored Citizens Protective League, they blocked the town from enacting the legislation. In 1917, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that residential segregation in such ordinances were unconstitutional. By 1918, the Falls Church group was a full-fledged chapter of the NAACP and continued to fight successfully for equality in education, equal access to public services, and voter participation in the Northern Virginia area. These local leaders and those who joined them went on to fight against segregation laws in Virginia and for equal rights and opportunities for all people. Making History Visible. Founded in 1997 to remember and to commemorate the successful fight by African-Americans against segregation in 1915, and with a mission seeking to explore and interpret the African-American history in the area, the Tinner Hill Heritage Foundation launches a new focus and programming direction.
All right, thank you.
My name is Sue Thackeray. Actually, I'm currently living in Hamilton, Montana, but I was born and raised here, and I come back and spend at least four months in the area, and I'm very interested in the community. Another vision that the Tinner Hill Heritage Foundation proposes is a set of public murals executed on the surfaces of buildings in or near the neighborhood of the Tinner Hill District. As many as twenty surfaces on various businesses and non-residential buildings have been identified. The murals will draw on local, regional, and national civil rights history on faces and events of the past. The Tinner Hill Heritage Foundation will work with experienced artists to create public art that will reach viewers, enabling them to know, to learn, to engage with the content depicted in murals. To make things go quicker, I am going to use the acronym THHF, the Tinner Hill Heritage Foundation, plans to involve local schools, historic organizations, and other resources in the realization of murals, but even more importantly, in creating interactive programming once the murals are complete. Asserting Freedom. The THHF will host an annual or biannual presentation that draws on the past to review the present and draw lessons for the future. The format for the presentation may vary greatly and could include public lectures, panel discussions, art and performance, or exhibition, as well as other participatory programs. Whatever the format, the THHF proposes to bring those innovative and creative minds and talents to Falls Church to explore the nature or status of freedom. The event will take place in a prominent location in Falls Church. It says to be determined, but we have, as Ed suggested, talked about the use of the Blacksmith Shop, which has been closed for quite a lot of years. It's for storage, but it was built in the 1800s, 1800s, as kind of a center point for the crossroads of Falls Church when it first got started. So we feel like it's an important piece of history here. Interactive Audio Tour. By 2020, the THHF will complete the development of its interpretive interactive audio tour, which will enable audiences to visit the sites related to African-American history in Falls Church, as well as other related sites. The tour will include some Victorian homes, the Falls Church Episcopal, the old Blacksmith Shop, and other pending city projects, including the Intermodal Transit Center. On this spot, the past vanishes as cities grow and time passes to enable visitors to see the layers of history that surrounds them as they navigate their way in the 21st century, Falls Church. THHF proposes to create a series of markers reminding inhabitants and visitors of the events and individuals that shaped Falls Church history. For example, the very busy Lee Highway intersects with land taken by eminent domain from several Black families who had farms there. The creation of Lee Highway, named after Robert E. Lee, displaced those residents and changed their lives. Markers noting where they lived, what they did, the properties they owned should provide a perspective on thoroughfare named after the general who led the Confederate cause most. Take for granted. Can I add one thing real quick?
Quickly.
Sorry, I'll do it very quickly. I was polishing the brass in the Falls Church Episcopal churchyard. It took about two days to do this for the memorial gardens, and there was probably about four or five couples that came in at different times that had read on a website that if they were going to come to DC, they should come to the church and tour it. And I realized at that point that there were no tourists. There was nothing to show these people, you know? And then I realized that there's a lot of people that come to Falls Church to take tours or learn about the history, and so I think it's a really important thing that we look into, maybe doing more for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it, all right? Welcome.
Heidi Cooper, 410 South Maple. So I moved to Falls Church about five years ago, and frankly, what I knew of it was its segregationist history. And knowing that these sorts of divisions outlast their legal structures made me very uncomfortable for myself and my children. But fortunately, I found the exhibits by Tinner Hill and then was lucky enough to take a tour with Nikki Henderson. And this really helped me feel at home in Falls Church. It made me feel that I was in a place where diversity wasn't an afterthought. It was deeply embedded, and this made living in Falls Church much more comfortable for me. So as a resident of Pearson Square, I would love to see the murals there. It would make, it would make our commitment to diversity public. It's not something you have to seek out, it's something you can't avoid, and that's what I want for my community, so.
Thank you so much. All right, who's next?
Betsy Sharon, 410 South Maple Avenue. I wanted to come and speak in favor of the mural project and MLK Day and promoting the tourism. I think, I encourage you to take a look at the research, the long document Tinner Hill put together, because there, it does note economic benefits, and the council has been so good up to now in terms of promoting diversity and inclusion. You've made this, that kind of place, and Falls Church City should be on the map for that. If you're at all involved in business and corporations now, diversity and inclusion is all the rage. You'd have to be in a coma not to read the studies that are out there, and Scott Page's new book about how diverse teams create innovation that creates more corporate profits. It's something that it would be great to be known for, and so I came to speak in favor of this project because I think it really would be something that would benefit our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, welcome.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Maum. I live at 207 Pennsylvania Avenue, and I've lived in Falls Church since 1997, and I'm a member of the Social Justice Committee and that is within the Tinner Hill Foundation. I'd like to briefly say I thought that farm idea was a great idea. I'm sorry that family has left, but I grew up on a farm, and I would love to see something like that happen on the Fellow's property. I'd help. So I wanted to support this initiative that Nikki and everyone else have just been talking about. I think there are multiple benefits, and it's very consistent with the policy that the chamber representative just spoke about. First of all, my, I asked my daughter tonight what she knew about this history. She knew it, and I, she knew it better than I did, and the reason she did is that she learned it at Mary Ellen Henderson School. And I think our kids are learning about it, but we need to ensure that our community members know about it as well, and that it's visible both to residents here, and which would really build, help build community, I think, and also be an economic draw for tourists and for people to, who are interested in history and then can eat dinner here. So, and then the final, I also, I wanted to also mention, and Mary Beth was there, but there was a meeting last week of people interested in improving both safety and aesthetics of Lee Highway, and I think the mural effort and the sidewalk stamping and others, you know, other efforts that are within this proposal are very consistent with that and would affect a piece of Lee Highway that was the subject of discussion at that meeting. And finally, I just, I was remembering today, my mother told me a story when I was young about how when she and her, my father had what she said was not two nickels to rub together, she was at our local farmer's market, and she bought flowers, and she was heartened by a friend who said, "It's food for the soul." And while it's, flowers are not historic, I think this effort is also food for the soul, both for our community and for our kids and for all the families and other individuals who live here. So I think it's, arts are not always the highest priority, but I think this ought to be a really high priority. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, who's next?
Me.
All right.
Last but not least, I just want to give you a quick overview. If you look through the information that we passed out, you'll find several maps. You'll see what we've proposed as the Tinner Hill Historic Mural District. Peter Adriens has moved out of Falls Church, but he put a great deal of time into identifying buildings in the historic area that could support murals. And the difference between our murals, we hope, is that it's based on history, not necessarily what happened on that spot, but nearby, or that had an impact on the state or the region. We have a jewel on Tinner Hill on Lee Highway, South Washington Street. I was at the meeting that Sylvia talked about and Mr. Painter talked about. Everybody's on the same page. What if you were driving down South Washington Street, and instead of seeing a blank white wall, you saw a colorful, huge mural? You can see the Ace Tool Building for two miles away. If it was something interesting, you might stop. Maybe not that day, but you might decide, hmm, what's going on there? I think I'll bring the wife and the kids back. If there was something that beckoned you. Currently, at last count, 23,000 cars a day whiz down South Washington Street. Tinner Hill was nearly turned down for a grant from a major foundation who told us that their decision-making committee said that Falls Church was simply a pass-through from Washington, D.C. to the outer burbs. Fortunately for me, I invited him out for a site visit, and we walked almost our whole 2.2 square miles, and he thanked me. He said, "I had no idea that there was this much to Falls Church." We have to stop people and give them a reason to come back, to have dinner, spend the night at some of our festivals, some of our quality events, and spend their money and increase our take, because we're bearing the brunt of wear and tear on our roads. So with that, I'd like to say, just think about it. The time is right. We're replacing sidewalks. We're doing some major repairs and installations. Let's not look back in five years and say, oh, we could have done it back in 2019 or 2020.
All right, thank you so much. So I do have another speaker, and I don't know if he's here today, Matt Velu? Okay, would you like to come up and speak, sir?
Thank you. My name is Matt Velu. Address is 87 Haiti Street in Warrenson, Virginia. I'm coming before you all once again. I've been here a couple of times now, but I wanted to remind you all of your obligation to intercede for those being taken away to death in the city of Falls Church. So another matter of social justice that cannot be ignored is that at 900 South Washington Street, there's a killing facility that murders innocent children every day, and the time for justice is now. Last time we were here, Vice Mayor Connolly kindly addressed us and essentially said that due to state law, that your hands are tied in mandates regarding abortion, but I think you all need to know that you have a duty as lesser magistrates to actively oppose such an unjust decree handed down by a higher authority. You have a duty to obey God rather than man, and when the state allows that which God forbids, in this case abortion on demand, you must choose who you will serve. We have, we have no obligation to obey the state when they redefine the rule of law and create unrighteous and wicked laws. So I'm calling on you all to ignore Roe. Courts do not make laws, and the Constitution does not provide any rights to murder children of any age. We have a duty to resist and oppose such things, and any authority who upholds any unjust law becomes complicit in the higher authority's rebellion against God. So there are really only two options for us today, and that is either to join the higher magistrate, our state and federal government, in their rebellion against God, or choose to stand on God's law in opposition to unjust and immoral decrees. However, neutrality is not an option here today, and you cannot hide behind the excuse that I'm just doing my job, or it's just the law of the land. By your action or your complicit silence, you choose a side. So I'm calling on you to interpose and act as a buffer by placing yourself between the tyrannical mandates and the people of the city that you represent. This means doing anything in your power to end abortion in the city of Falls Church. Your job is to uphold that which is righteous in your local jurisdiction. This is a sacred duty before God, and my hope is that you all will understand your God-given right and duty to interpose, to stand in the gap for your preborn neighbors. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is, I believe I'm reading this correctly, Leroy, is it Chamnis? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Close enough.
Okay.
Leroy Chamnis, 3506 Schurman House Drive. Creed by Stephen Turner. We all believe in Freud, Marx, and Darwin. We believe everything is okay as long as you don't hurt anyone, to the best of your definition of hurt, and to the best of your knowledge. We believe in sex before, during, and after marriage. We believe in the therapy of sin. We believe in the, that adult- We believe in the, that adultery is fun. We believe that abortion's okay. We believe that taboos are taboo. We believe everything is getting better despite evidence to the contrary. The evidence must be investigated and you can prove anything with evidence. We believe there's something in horoscopes, UFOs, and Ben spoons. Jesus was a good man, just like Buddha, Muhammad, and ourselves. He was a moral teacher, though we think his morals were pretty bad. We believe that all religions are basically the same, at least the ones that we read were. They all believe in love and goodness. They only differ on matters of creation, sin, heaven, hell, God, and salvation. We believe that after death comes the nothing. Because when we ask the dead what happens, they say nothing. And if the dead, and if death is not the end, if the dead have lied, then it's compulsory heaven for all, excepting perhaps Hitler, Stalin, and Genghis Khan. We believe in Masters and Johnson. What's selected is average and what's average is normal. What's normal is good. We believe in total disarmament. We believe that the direct, there's a direct link between warfare and bloodshed. Americans should beat their guns into plowshares and the Russians would surely follow suit. We believe that man is essentially good. It is only his behavior that lets him down. The fault, this is the fault of society. Society is the fault of conditions. Conditions are the fault of society. We believe that each man must find the truth that is right for him. Reality will adapt accordingly. The universe will readjust. History will alter. We believe there's no substitute for truth excepting the truth, that there's no absolute truth. We believe in the rejection of creeds and the flowering of individual thought, and this is the postscript, "If chance be the father of all flesh, disaster is his rainbow in the sky." And when you hear emergent, state of emergency, sniper kills 10, troops on rampage, youths go looting, it is but the sound of man worshiping his maker. Genesis, Chapter 17, Verse 1. "I am Almighty God. Walk before me and be blameless." Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Jeanette, is it Cohen? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jeanette Cohen and I live at 713 Bonnie Meadow Lane in Fort Washington, Maryland. Our founding father, Thomas Jefferson, who is staring at us right over here on this wall, is quoted as saying, "The care of human life and happiness and not their destruction is the first and only object of good government." The first and only object of good government. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this first and only object of good government is not happening in Falls Church, Virginia. In Falls Church, 2015 citizens every year are murdered through abortion on your watch at Falls Church Healthcare Center on 900 South Washington Street. This number is a 2017 statistics from the Virginia Department of Health. In all of Virginia, approximately 42 lives every day, every day, are unjustly terminated and approximately 17,210 every year, according to the Guttmacher Institute. These 2015 lives per year are your citizens. They are not being equally protected under our laws. And as a governing authority, the people are to submit to you. For you are appointed by God and the laws exist to be a tyranny to evil. That's Romans 13. Therefore, you will be held more accountable to God as men and women in positions of power. Now you may say to me, "But Mrs. Cohen, we are pro-life and we're quote, 'winning.' We have enacted restrictive laws such as the woman must receive state-directed counseling and then wait 24 hours before then being allowed to kill her child. Or a patient must undergo an ultrasound and then again wait 24 hours before attaining an abortion." And of course, the mother may choose or may not choose to look at the image of her own child before then being allowed to kill her own child again. These laws are iniquitous decrees. They regulate murder. If murder is crime, we don't regulate crime. We abolish it. Laws like this may come from a good intention but end up legitimizing the destruction of the innocent by regulating murder as if it were healthcare. So instead of trimming at the branches of the abortion tree with our regulations, we should be taking an ax to the root of the tree of abortion and abolish it, completely abolish it. Ladies and gentlemen, you do not need new laws. Merely exist the enforcing, merely enforce our existing Virginia murder statutes. Establish equal protection for the unborn child. You should do everything in your power to stop the shedding of innocent blood the same way that you would if a business in your jurisdiction were killing born children. You need to defy the Supreme Court. Yeah. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is, is it Cecile Kane? Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Good evening, Mayor of Falls Church and your council members. I live in Arlington, 4306 12th Road South, Number 21, Arlington 22204. Sitting in my living room decades ago, praying about something that needed looking into, something in the connection with anger in my personal life, something that just didn't need to be pushed under the carpet. And as clear as a bell came some words to my mind, pray for those who are counseling abortion. And I wanted to tell you what I've been thinking about that recently after meeting some dedicated abolitionists against abortion, that Jesus saw a clear connection between anger and murder. Anger in the heart, if it's really not dealt with in the long run, is a form of murder to your fellow man. And in his great Sermon on the Mount, he talks about that. It is, it's clearly, he's very clear about the consequences of unrighteous anger and of course murder. And that's, by the way, it's Matthew, Chapter 5, Verses 21 and 22. There's a beautiful verse that was brought out even in melody in 1976. As we thought about our country and prayed for it, 2 Chronicles 7:14. "If my people, who are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and turn from their wicked ways and seek my face, then I will hear from heaven and forgive their sin and heal their land." We've been very concerned about our country for years and years now with everything going on. And actually, this verse was about Israel. This was addressed to Israel. But I have found in a study of the Scriptures, Old and New Testament, that the history of Israel in Old and New Testament is a blueprint for every nation. It's a very merciful blueprint for us to look at carefully because the Lord warned Israel if they did not love Him and keep His good commandments, there would be consequences.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Croons. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay.
My name is Cynthia Croons, 6275 Cary Dale Drive, Springfield, Virginia. I'm also a big fan of Living Local and appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight to the council. I'm a registered nurse of over 30 years and a member of the National Association of Pro-Life Nurses. My position before you tonight is one of dire concern over the vast number of lives lost at the Falls Church Healthcare Center. This center is currently the third most prolific executioner of preborn humans in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. The previous speaker already spoke to the numbers. General methods of early-term abortions, up to about 14 weeks of pregnancy, include dismemberment, crushing, shredding by suction or sharp curett, poisoning or chemically burning the baby to death over a period of about 24 hours. Falls Church Healthcare Center advertises medical methods and vacuum aspirations of abortion. The medical method of putting an unwanted baby to death up to the age of about nine weeks disrupts the baby's access to nutrition and oxygen, in effect removing the baby from life support. Something like an older person trapped in a depressurized cabin of an airplane thereby becoming anoxic and progressing to death. For reference, a nine-week-old baby's heart is beating 160 times a minute. He's sucking his thumb. He has brainwaves. He feels pain. A preborn female at nine weeks has her own uterus and fallopian tubes completely distinct from her mother's body. To bring about death in a baby of up to about 14 weeks gestation, a thin tube is inserted via the cervix of the mother and attached to a strong vacuum. This is your vacuum aspiration. It rips the baby apart under high pressure and deposits the crushed and shredded body parts of the little human into a jar for inventory. For reference, at 13 weeks, the baby has fingerprints. His or her identity could be confirmed or refuted by our legal system. Murder is defined as the taking of a human life with malice aforethought. If abortion, if abortion isn't murder, then nothing is. Psalm 106 says, "And they shed innocent blood, blood of their sons and their daughters whom they have sacrificed, and their land is profaned with blood." The land is profaned with blood. You have the position and authority vested by civil law and established by God to provide justice and order for this city. You may be here for this specific reason. Outlaw abortion and make Falls Church a sanctuary city for preborn at all stages of development. You must. Abortion is not healthcare. It is cold-blooded murder. And the people have left here, but 50% of African-American pregnancies end in abortion. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Gage Thompson. Welcome.
How's it going? It's Gabe. It's okay. So I am the chef-owner of Thompson Italian that just recently opened up. And I am, we're here to talk about, and this is David Tax from Clear and Dawn's, you guys know him very well.
Celeste, we're doing our thing together so you can save time because we have a lot of time wasted.
Yeah. Anyway, we're very concerned about the development going on in the corner there by us, and I'm sure you can help talk about this a little bit more eloquently than I can, but...
Eloquently, I don't think so. But, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Letty for coming to Give Day today. And it was very well populated. We had a Give Day fundraiser for the schools. And also like to thank the members of the council and Wyatt for all their hard work getting us to our conclusion of our sewer problem. And it came to being taken care of now, and it was a lot of work and a lot of time. And I kind of miss seeing Wyatt every day or so, but we got to the end of it. So we're really happy about that. We feel like that was a good, good thing. So we had the opportunity to meet with Maury last week and he gave us, I don't know if y'all, I think maybe a couple of y'all have met with the developers, but basically, we wanted to kind of get in front of it. Now personally, I think Maury is a good guy and I think Insight, they're obviously a reputable company, except when it comes to the thing over there in Oak, where is it? Oak what? Oakwood, yeah. But, and we wouldn't mind having them as neighbors, but the plan that they showed us, and they said that's the plan, that's the end, that's it, that's what it's got to be, is apartments literally in the city lot behind us. And he said ultimately it would be better for us, but I mean, we know that it's not going to take not even six months for them to break ground in our parking lot and we'd be out of business. And we talked about possible alternatives as far as like valet and different parking lots around town and stuff, but I just don't really see our business surviving and we're not sure.
Or our business, you know? It's new.
So we're just here to kind of get in front of that and let you all know that we are not against Maury and not against Insight. We're completely against our parking lot being, city parking lot. And I think my landlord, Louie, owns a third of the parking lot, being four stories of apartments back there. I think that's it.
Yep.
And this is Gabe Thompson. If y'all haven't come to the Thompson Italian, you should definitely come to Thompson Italian. It's delicious. Is that only three minutes?
No, you said you were finished. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, we're finished. Thanks, Celeste. Thanks, Celeste. Y'all, good night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much and good luck and welcome to the city. Thank you for coming out. Let's see who else we've got here as speakers. Rebecca Tax, looks like our last speaker. So sorry you had to wait so long, but thank you for sticking around.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Tax. I live at 303 North Oak Street. And while I would go on and on about the same subject that they just talked about, that is not why I'm standing before you tonight. I'm standing before you tonight really to ask a question. If we have considered in the city of Falls Church using the like bright orange flags on either side of a crosswalk to help with pedestrian visibility, can you guys talk to me while we're talking? Like, do you know what I'm talking about? Have you seen this anywhere? We have a blind customer and she takes the 2A, gets her off in front of Kaiser, and every time she comes across that crosswalk, it scares the living daylights out of me because I see all the time people taking a left from park, going toward Arlington on their green light with pedestrians crossing. So this is on the Kaiser side, right? Not on the Clear and Dawn's Beach Tech side. I've seen people hit in that, in that crosswalk and just is generally not super safe for a regular sighted person. So it makes me feel very nervous about a blind person. And I know in Arlington, businesses have been sponsoring them. And I would just like to tell you that we would love to sponsor the crosswalk flags on that crosswalk if that's something we can do.
All right. Thank you very much. And the city manager, are you aware of these flags, Mr. Shields?
So these are flags that the pedestrian actually picks up and carries across the street so that they can be more visible.
Correct. There's a bucket on both sides.
Yeah. Let me follow up with you after this meeting and we can talk it out.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Tax, for bringing that up. They're actually in place right now in Northwest. I think the neighbors in that neighborhood actually put them there, but I think staff originally had some concerns. Let's follow up. The other request I'd like to add on, though, is regardless of whether they're blind or not, I'd like to see more protected walk signals to prevent people from actually getting hit so that you actually have a protected walk signal at all times and you can't do a left on the green and actually hit someone regardless of whether you're blind or not. I know we've added eight of those across the city. So if the Broad and Washington intersection does not have one of those LPIs already installed, I'd love to see that done.
That would be awesome. And also it'd be super helpful to have the, the sound that goes with the crosswalk that advises a not sighted person that it is safe to cross at that time.
Yep.
Which also is not in place. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That is our last speaker at this point, so thank you all for coming out to speak. We are now moving on to the report of the retirement board. So do we have folks from the retirement board here this evening? Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you over there. Thanks for sticking around and your patience and your fine work on behalf of the city.
Sure, thank you. Just adjust this. All right. So my name is Connie Reidberg, 105 Hilliard Street. I am the chair of the retirement board. I've been on the board for 10 years. And my day job is providing the kind of financial analysis and oversight for retirement plans for corporate pension plans, similar to what I'm going to be presenting to you today. So a little different from government plans, but same concept and generally same ideas. So we have a five-page report in front of you. I think I have five minutes, so I will go through many things very quickly. But if you do have questions, I encourage you to stop me and ask questions. So in the first two pages, we've outlined the roles and responsibilities of the retirement board. On page two, line 44, we have the membership. We have three citizens and four current or former employees on the retirement board. Excuse me, four current... excuse me, four current or former, yes, city employees who are participants in the plan and the board or quarterly meetings and staffing. So going ahead to page three, line 64, we've outlined the assets that are in the pension plans, as well as the OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefit Plans, which is primarily medical benefits. So the basic plan covering employees, we've got about $113 million. Police plan, the retirement board oversees $36 million, and for the OPEB, $16 million. Our return during this past FY '19 was around 7% for all of the plans. We manage these plans on a long-term basis, so our five-year annual return for the two pension plans is just about 8%, and we're very proud of those results. Our investment consultant and co. tells us that puts us in the top 5% of results for similarly, similar retirement plans. Moving down on line 69, we have another table. This is from our actuary, providing information about the assets in the plan, the liabilities, which is the value of the benefits earned to date. Now, the actuaries measure assets a little bit differently. First of all, they exclude water sale money, and I'll talk a little bit more about water sale money in a minute, but they also smooth the investment returns. So in the basic plan, their measurement is that we have 99 million of assets, about 95 million of liability, so a funded status of 104.5%, which is a great result. Our target is 100%, so that's a slight improvement from last year, and again, since our target is 100%, we're very proud of that result. For the police plan, we're similarly around 104%, and we're still waiting for the information on the OPEB funded status. All right, moving forward, so on line 75, we have a table about the water sale money that's contained in the pension plan. And you may remember that in 2005, the city council made a decision to take $9.2 million from the water sale proceeds and place them into the retirement plans. This was intended to be an endowment-like structure, and the intent there was the earnings from the endowment would be used to offset contributions that the city would otherwise be required to make. That reduction in the contribution could then be used to fund other things like the capital improvement projects. So we're pleased to tell you that the 9.2 million from July 1, 2015, four years later, just that principal has grown from 9.2 million to 9.7 million, so an increase of a half million dollars. But as I said, the investment earnings on those monies are intended to help the city, so it's not just the half a million dollars. If you go down into the table on line 77, in addition to the half million dollars of increase in the principal, the city's been allocated earnings from the principal of 1.7 million that the city is still holding to be used in future years to offset contributions, as well as 1.4 million that have actually been used over the last four years to offset and reduce contributions. So a total value to the city of about 3.6 million over these last four years, so about a 40% return to the city over four years, which of course we are thrilled with and very appreciative of the council, the trust that you've placed in the retirement board. All right. On pages four and five, we've outlined some of the things that we've been tackling over the last couple of years. On an ongoing basis, we review the investment returns quarterly with our investment consultant and co-consulting. Periodically, we bring in some of the investment managers to talk to us. During that process, we do sometimes identify investment managers that we have decided don't, haven't been meeting the mandate we've been providing to them. Most recently, we replaced SKBA, one of our investment managers, who was not performing as we had hoped, and replaced them with JP Morgan and a Vanguard Fund for a similar investment strategy in equities. Line 116, we oversee who the actuary is. Our contract with our former actuary ended in July, or at the end of fiscal '19. We replaced that actuary with another actuarial firm, Siegel Consulting, and we're very excited that has gone well, and we're very excited to get their insights and perspectives. And then the last thing I'll highlight is on line 130, the water sale proceeds, as you might imagine, that's a very complicated topic, and a lot of details that went into this. So we have been busy working on the details and really memorializing those details so that, you know, if there's staff turnover, council turnover, turnover in the retirement board, all of that is maintained so that that water sale money can continue to benefit the city on a long-term basis. That is my very quick report. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much for that fine report. I'm going to get to you. I just wanted to thank her first for you and the board's fine work on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
The returns, I think, are quite impressive, and I think it was useful that you pointed out the return on the water sale proceeds, which I think has been quite good for our taxpayers. So, anyway, Vice Mayor Connolly, did you have a question or comment?
I just want to say thank you for this. This is one of the first things that I learned about when I first became a member of council, and many people spent many hours explaining to me how this was going to work, so it is very gratifying to see line 78, that there's been a $3.6 million return. I do think that Mr. Eric Cailin deserves some recognition there because this was his plan, and it is coming to fruition as he had promised me that it would, and I was skeptical. And I know that this is no guarantee of future return, but this is a nice start with this. And I also just want to thank you for memorializing this, because that was my biggest concern, is that we would do this, and then it would just get lost, and it would just be jumbled into operating cost and capital, and we wouldn't remember what that investment was and how the city is using that investment. So I thank you for including that in here, and I know every year when we do the budget, Mr. Shields includes that retirement dividend as well, so that we know how much is coming into our operating budget. So thank you for this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Just wondering, how many jurisdictions are there that have 104.5% funded status, or any equivalent thereof?
Yes. We are among one of the top funded pension plans. There are very few states that have fully funded retirement plans, including the state of Virginia, and we are told by our consultants that we are one of the very few in Virginia that have fully funded pension plans, so it's something for us to be very proud of.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think, you know, there's so much publicity in the press nationally and regionally and state and so forth about pension plans, particularly in some states, you know, just really being a problem, that people, the default is that people assume somehow that we're part of that problem too, but not true, not the case, quite the opposite. Thanks for your hard work in helping make that happen, and commendations to councils that I've had the privilege to serve on, and those before too, who put us in the position that we're in today.
And thank you for the council's commitment to continuing to fund the recommended amount to the pension plan, because that's also an issue for some jurisdictions, that the recommended amount does not contribute, but the city consistently contributes the amount that is recommended, and we appreciate that as the retirement board.
I think also, I would note that the bond rating agencies take note of these sort of things, you know, and I've had the privilege of being, participating in some degree, some of those conversations, that I think having an overfunded pension plan is quite impressive and is noted by others. So thank you. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for this report. I had absolutely nothing to do with the water sale, but I will tell you...
Still take credit for it.
I'm not going to take credit for it, but I will say, I do a lot of work around this type of research, and from a state and local perspective, from a pension perspective, one, the fund that we have and where we sit, I mean, I think you're probably being, I don't think you're, we're patting ourselves on the back enough for you're not being as excited as you should be. I mean, this is like a unicorn-type situation for most state and local jurisdictions, and coming out of the recession, most jurisdictions cut corners as it related to funding their pensions. So the fact that the city is in the position that it's in, even though it may be quite a bit smaller budget than the state of California or Chicago, Illinois, it really is remarkable. So for those that were involved in this, Mr. Duncan and others, Mary Beth can take credit for it. I mean, this is, it really is just absolutely fantastic, so I commend you guys for very wise decisions. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or questions? If not, thank you once again, we appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Sure. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. All right, our next item is council requests. Are there any council requests? Ms. Hardy?
I don't know why, whether you're planning on giving your regular city manager a report, but in light of the comments we've gotten about the Insight project, I'd love an update on that either tonight or separately. And then, in general, given all the attention paid in the community to stormwater and traffic calming, whether you have updates on those two?
All right, are there other council requests? Mr. Lichten?
Would just like to note, I had the opportunity to sit in for Mayor Tartar a couple of NVRC, or an NVRC meeting, which was more exciting than I thought. It was great. I really enjoyed it. Your consigliere, I think is what you called it. They have a great book out. It's called A Quick Guide for Northern Virginia, and it's basically a complete list of divisions and contact numbers and contact information for every major government service in every county and member of NVRC. I've got four booklets we can hand out, but for those that are interested, you can go to novaaquickguide.org, and it's just packed full of great information for those that may not want to take the time to look it up. And it was also really, really interesting and fascinating, a report on the economic development impact of our region's airports and the airport authorities. So that information is out there as well, and it's, it was just, it was great. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me sit in on your behalf. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other council requests? Mr. Duncan?
Can I just, one thing, before we get started with the bigger gauge stuff, the signal at Southwest Street on Broad going northbound, I'd raise that as a question. It was short cycling, and tonight, before I came to the meeting, I stopped and counted, and it looks like it's up to 12, 13 seconds of green when you're going through that intersection, so that's good. I think previously it had been like three or four, and I was continuing to get emails from people asking about this as recently as this afternoon, so I guess I'm just, you know, making a general announcement to, if you're going through that light, let us know if it somehow reverts back to its bad habits, but right now it appears to be working, you know, as it should be.
All right. Any other council requests? If not, let's move on to the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I've got a number of things to report on. First, I'll start with just a public service announcement to the voters that vote in Ward Two of the city. If you normally vote at Falls Green, formerly known as Oakwood, you'll be voting in the upcoming election at the community center. And this has been publicized widely, and I just wanted to give the council a quick update on our work with the registrar and with the electoral board to get the word out and what we'll plan to do on Election Day itself. First, we're making adjustments here at City Hall, just so that we ensure there's plenty of parking and it's easy for people to vote at the community center, since we'll have two wards, both Ward Two and Ward Three, voting at the community center, and we'll have good signage to explain to everybody where they should vote. At Falls Green, we will have signage there on site, and we also will have a message board, the big orange message boards, well in advance of Election Day, to tell voters that they, if they normally vote at Falls Green, that their polling place has been moved to the community center. We'll have board signage up on site during Election Day, and in short, we're trying to get word out in every way. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, but I'll hit a couple other things first.
Before you leave that subject, are you going to have a physical presence up there? I think you should. I really do think that people are going to come on up there, they're not going to see your sign, maybe they're elderly or just for whatever reason, don't happen to see your signage or ignore it, or think they're headed and making a beeline to where they always go. I personally think I ought to have someone up there directing people.
Ms. Mester's been working most closely with the registrar, so she might have information in terms of their view on that?
Mr. Burkey and the electoral board is working with the League of Women Voters for presence up there, as well as volunteers to help ride, provide rides if somebody needs transportation down to the community center.
It'd be great to have somebody there the whole time, you know, from the polls open to when they close, not just a sporadic presence, but it'd be a shame if even one person didn't vote who wanted or intended to vote, so...
They concur with you, and we're working closely with them.
Okay.
Second thing I wanted to... A second thing to report on tonight, we had the sale of bonds last Wednesday, I'm sorry, last Tuesday, and this was the sale of bonds to finance the George Mason High School, the Fellows' property acquisition, and the Mary Riley Stiles Library renovation and expansion. The winning bidder for the bonds was Morgan Stanley. There were seven bidders that competed for it, and the interest rate for the bonds, it's a mixed interest rate, but for the whole package is 2.71%. So that is a very low rate. It is well below what we modeled when we discussed this with the voters during the referendum, and it was an important moment for the city. We've worked for at least 10 years to figure out a plan to finance the high school in particular, but to finance the entire capital plan, and so that was a major, an important step for the city to obtain that financing. Just very briefly, the financing amounts were $110.8 million for George Mason High School. If you'll recall, $6.2 million was financed in 2018 for a total of $117 million in financing for the high school. That's all at 30-year term debt. $4.7 million for the Fellows' property, and $7.3 million for the library, per the council's authorization. So congratulations to the city on that financing. Another few transportation items. Fairfax County is putting in to the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority a grant application for funding for the Ring Road around Seven Corners. This Ring Road was included in the 2015 Seven Corners Plan. Staff will be meeting with Fairfax County to get a briefing on the project, and we do plan to have a council discussion on this, because we're the immediate adjacent to this project, and as is typical for NVTA projects, when there's a project that is either adjacent to or right on the border, the NVTA likes to have an endorsement from both the submitting jurisdiction plus the neighboring jurisdiction. So we'll be working with the county on that. Washington Street, there was a Virginia Tech study that brought together neighbors on both sides of Washington Street and the Greenway Downs neighborhoods. We had a meeting last Thursday that was, where these Virginia Tech class, sponsored by Shelley Mastern, brought everybody together. Seventy people came, and really, the big news is, is that that many people really want Washington Street to be safer and to be more walkable. People want to be able to walk across Washington Street safely to visit their neighbors. And so Virginia Tech is helping us come up with some design options for that. We hope to get a report from them in December, and then we'll consider next steps from there. But this obviously would be a joint project with Fairfax County when it comes to implementation. I wanted to note two notable retirements of city staff this month. One is Valerie Wilson, who's worked for 40 years with the Mary Riley Stiles Library. Her last day of work will be Wednesday this week, but we had a party for her last week. But Ms. Wilson, thank you for your 40 years of service to the city. And Richard Campbell, our deputy chief of police, is retiring from the city after 38 years of service. He started in 1981, and he's had just about every job in the police department in the intervening years, but we thank him for his service, and we'll be having a party for him next week, I think next Friday. But we thank him for his service, and we'll be having a party for him next week, I think, next Friday. A report on traffic calming. Staff right now is working as a follow-up to the briefing we had to city council on the neighborhood traffic calming program to operationalize the grant that we've received for all the projects that are in queue. We're working through that option, but we're also considering other options. We're just taking whole groups of neighborhoods where we've received multiple applications, and notably, sort of all of the feeder streets into Washington, into South Washington Street, considering that as a package and having possibly that whole package be financed through this grant application as well. We are mindful of the fact that we'll be discussing a budget amendment with the city council in the November-December timeframe, and the city council may want to discuss traffic calming in terms of that budget amendment. But in the meantime, we're trying to move this grant forward. As we did note before, these grants are slow. We just, we know from experience that Virginia Department of Transportation takes a long time to approve the paperwork, sometimes six months to nine months. And that is, just comes with the territory with using the grant funds for that purpose. In the meantime, we are moving forward the Annandale and Gundry project. Jeff Sykes met with the Winter Hill neighbors. That project design was well-received. That is sort of the last step in our NTC process for that project. And so we will be moving to implementation this fall. And then the next one in queue is the Great Falls-Little Falls Traffic Calming Project. And so that one is next up. With respect to the many streets that have been contacting us, and Nolan is one of the projects that's in queue and awaiting funding. We did have a visible police presence on the street really all last week and really since that council meeting. And Captain Ral has met with the neighbors. We'll be placing a new traffic counter on the street this week. And then, once we've done our traffic counts, we'll also have a speed detection sign and, you know, one of those mobile signs to, you know, encourage people to see how fast they're going and slow down. So we're working with that neighborhood. The pace of change is likely to cause some frustration, but we're going to work through these projects as best we can. Lastly, the question tonight was on the Insight project. Staff has met with the Insight team and has reviewed their ideas or at least heard their ideas on a potential new application for the site. And we think it would need to be just that, a brand-new special exception application if they were to do the ideas that they're proposing, because it is a fairly substantial change. And it also would include the city lot. We did have a closed-session discussion just on the real estate dimension of that to discuss that in closed session. But of course, there have been no meetings with the council and the development team to date because we've not yet received a formal application. When such time we do, we'll review it, and we'll work through in terms of what the schedule and what the process would be. Insight has met with the neighbors, as you heard tonight, both on the commercial side, but has also met with the residential neighbors. And we were, staff was not present at those meetings, but our assumption is that the information presented to the neighbors is the same as what's been presented to staff as an informal presentation of their ideas on how to move forward. So I think the word on the Insight project is more to come. When we do get a, if we get a formal application, we'll certainly share that information. So that's all I have to report tonight.
All right. Questions or comments? Mr. Lipton House and then Ms. Hardy?
Yeah, on the neighborhood traffic calming piece. We talked about some of these kind of quicker delivery, kind of quick hits things to help solve for some of these. I understand the feeder streets down from Washington, we have talked about dealing with that in a comprehensive fashion, but are there other things planned? I know that, you know, I certainly have asked and would love to see spot enforcement on those streets from police or sheriff's department. I think that having that periodically, and the mayor has asked about a, you know, potential known schedule for where those officers or sheriff's deputies would be on a regular basis. But as opposed to waiting potentially a year, two years for that grant to come through, some of these streets, you know, I would certainly like to see some things that we can do in the near term that either involve existing city resources or if it's an allocation of funds coming up in November, December to satisfy those, I would like to know what those are and to have action items.
Yes, I was going to make a similar request of whether we can deploy, I'm glad police was out on Nolan, but also deploy them to everyone else in the queue. I'm glad that we were able to help the residents on Nolan, but I think we're having similar requests elsewhere. I also wanted to make sure people saw the request that came from a collection of neighbors on Rosemary. There's over 50 people that signed that. So I know that Rosemary is one of those feeder streets off 29, but clearly, people are feeling it pretty acutely. And so as we look at options, I know we talked about that federal grant really having a long lead time. And as we think about the budget amendment coming up, I would reiterate my suggestion to consider both a combination of local dollars and federal dollars. So those local dollars going towards the higher priority immediate needs, and then using the federal grants, because I think free money is always a good thing, using the federal money for stuff that can wait 12 months. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
On Northwest Street, the bump out that was being built, I was there last Thursday or Friday. I assume construction there continues. And what about the other end of Northwest with the crosswalk at Greenwich? Is that painting projected to happen sooner rather than later?
It is. The sidewalk improvements have been made, the curb cuts, et cetera. And the painting will be the last thing that's done at both West and Oak and at Greenwich. And then we do have the other concrete project at Greenwich in Lincoln. That work will be done as well, and then the pet crossing we put in there as well. So that was all basically one package of work. The, one of the issues that is just a feature of these smaller projects is the contractors, it's such a small job that the contractors, we spend a ton of time getting them to show up and to do the work, because if they have a bigger job or a more profitable job, we can put all the constraints on them in the contract. We, you know, we certainly try to put all those things in there, but they're just, it's because they're small jobs, it's just a feature of it. And so I think we had anticipated this was going to be a 10-day project, and it's been longer than that.
And the communication we received from our good friend, Mr. Ply Meyer, this afternoon falls in the category of, you know, he's in a neighborhood with a lot of other streets that are demanding attention, and it would just be helpful for everyone there to understand that we are probably going to try to look at these things holistically. So whatever you can do to communicate that message out to all the folks along all those streets would be helpful, because it's going to take some time. You know, Marshall Street has already sort of had work done on it, and now it still wants more. Apparently, some folks do, but other streets have not had any work done on them. And equity would suggest that they're probably going to get attention before somebody gets a second round of attention.
Yeah, understood. And so we've, it's a big challenge. I mean, we're getting, we get so many of these requests. And so you really do have to have a process, or it's just, it is pure chaos. And we do just need to be mindful of the fact that, for instance, on the Gundry project, Zach Bradley is our engineer for that. So he's going to be focused on getting that project done. He's, this is also the city's paving season. We're always typically pretty late in the paving season. Again, because we're small, the bigger projects get done first, and then we'll get our paving done. He'll be busy with that. So these meetings on the street that I was saying, you know, how great they can be is to have the engineer out there with a can of spray paint. You know, we have to have the staff available to do that. And our staff is right now implementing projects that were urgent six months ago, and they're urgently getting them done now. So we just, we do need to ask people to work with us. We are going to be responsive. We're going to get to them, but we do need to follow a process, and we need to put things in queue so we can get things done in a rational way.
I agree with that. I think, again, it's a challenge of communications as much as anything, and I think we're all here, understanding what you're saying and trying to do our part. And I suggest that you, you know, deploy all resources that you have at your disposal to spend a little more effort on using city channels to give people the bigger picture of what it is we're trying to do and what the timetable's likely to be.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, on the West Street crosswalk that's going in, I had a concern from a citizen who is a biker, who was concerned about that now that there's a bump out, it makes bikers, makes biking more perilous in that area. And I know we can't do everything. But, so I'm wondering, as we're looking at those, are we looking at biking and driving and walking with each intersection as we're going? Or how are we looking at it to make sure we're meeting the needs of as many people as possible? And then my second question is, and her concern was, she didn't know anything about changes being made. We did it quickly. We did it in response to a big concern about safety. But she said she never heard anything about changes that were going to happen on this street where she lived, because it went out so quickly. So I'm also wondering about process, because we're trying to be nimble and respond to concerns. There are also people that want to make sure they know about things that are happening.
Yeah, that's, that is a feature of it. And not to belabor the point, but there, you know, these neighborhood street projects, everyone cares deeply about their street. And so we have, in the past, vowed we're going to charge ahead and we're just going to do things. And we typically get called to task for that. And at the end of the day, what people really want is to have a lot of interaction on these. And that just, it does mean that it gobbles up a lot of time for each one of them. And so while we talked about rolling out a whole package of these at once on a vision that we could do that, when we get into it and we meet on the street with the neighbors, we are going to get a lot of sort of different opinions on things. And so we're going to sort through that as best we can and make decisions and take actions.
Thank you for that commitment.
Mr. Lipton House?
Yeah, from a, I mean, it sounds like, you know, we've got a throughput problem, limited resources, and these requests are coming fast and furious. Should we be thinking ahead about potentially outsourcing some of the project management, engineering piece of this? I mean, I know that still requires oversight from folks on staff, but if we're looking at allocating additional money to solve some of these problems, should we be thinking as part of that process to deal with some of these from a comprehensive perspective, subbing out some of the resource needs that we have?
Well, we're trying to keep the engineering to a minimum for these projects. And we have had projects in the past where it was shocking, like 40% of the cost was for engineering, which is really just unacceptable. So I think that staffing it is the way to go. I think the throughput problem is to try to get cooperation with the neighbors that we're going to be pretty, we're not going to be as deliberative or as consensus-building as we've been in the past. We're going to present some options. There's going to be a thumbs up or thumbs down, maybe some slight modification, but not multiple iterations of designs like we've done in the past. It's going to be more streamlined. I think that's the key to the throughput.
And I am 100% on board with that. We're not going to be able to make 100% of the people happy on every single street, but I think expediency to satisfy the majority, if it's smart, especially for some of these things that are smaller scale, some of the lighter fixes, make a whole lot of sense.
And on one positive note, that meeting with the Gundry neighborhood, that was just that way. We had a proposal, thumbs up, and so we're going to roll out with it. So that was a good success. Although I will say, I think we wish we were at this point maybe months ago, but nonetheless, we're moving ahead.
All right. Other comments, questions? Would you actually have a meeting that's on the agenda later? I would just have a couple of quick comments. One, I've had some of the same conversations some of my colleagues have. I wonder if at some point, Wyatt, you can discuss just briefly some of the tools in the toolkit. Hey, these are speed bumps, you know? They're not, they work in these instances, but not in these. I know some folks have said, oh, just put some speed bumps up. That solves the problem. And I know there are issues with each different kind of solution, and a lot of thought goes into what's best for a street. And I think maybe just having a public discussion about the different methods that are used to calm traffic and their advantages and disadvantages and how they might work would be useful to the general public and people who are dealing with these kind of issues. Secondly, I've spoken to some of the same folks as well with regards to brick and the slipperiness of brick. And I'm just wondering if you have had any thoughts about that or had any issues with that, particularly that the idea that brick pavers might be more slippery than concrete. And I don't know if that's true or not, but if maybe you could take a look into that and just see if there are certain bricks that might be less prone to that, if in fact, that's the case. But I think several have had conversations about that. Lastly, I think the idea of having more enforcement in the meantime is a good one. And I wonder if we might get the chief or the sheriff or some folks just to attend a meeting and work collaboratively on trying to either work out a schedule or making sure we understand, you know, the limitations they might have and other roles they play. But, so we can try to maybe get, in the meantime, some more enforcement on some of these secondary streets that are having problems right now. All right. Does there anybody else have anything? Why don't we move on then to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, would you call the first item, please?
Yes. The first item is TR 19-35, Resolution Amending the Investment Guidelines for the City's Basic and Police Pension Funds for Sections 3.1 Funding, 4.3 Ethics and Conflicts of Interest, and Section 8.0 Asset Allocation to Add an Asset Class, Adjust Asset Allocation Percentages, and Make Minor Administrative Changes.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a staff report?
We do. And Cindy Mester is the staff lead on this. But just by way of introduction, you heard a moment ago about the $9.4 million investment in the pension fund from the sale of the water proceeds. And that a portion of that, $1.7 million, is kept in reserve in the pension fund in cash so that in the event of a market downturn, we'll have that cash on hand so we can maintain that $640,000 annual rate of investment return. So the allocation change that we're asking is to increase the cash allocation piece to 1% so that we can accommodate that reserve. In a nutshell, that's what we're asking for tonight, but there are some more details to it. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Mester.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Shields and council. And as you know, Chair Reiberg is still in the room and available for questions. But this is an opportunity to update the investment policy, and it's one of my responsibilities, since I'll be retaining the plan administrator duties with the hiring of the HR director. So as Mr. Shields noted, we do now have a fund that's considered cash where that water reserve earnings will go that are unused by the city. And it is also where, sometimes in the transition, we have cash. So it's appropriate to have the policy actually call out that asset class. And so that's what's before you on the chart, starting at line 54. So the most significant change to this policy would be 8-0, adjusting the 1% down in domestic equities and small cap, and then adding the cash. It is 1%, as Mr. Shields indicated. There is a range, so we can go as low as 0% and up to 5% to be in policy compliance. And then the other items are administrative, as you'll see in 3.1, 4.3, and just the header to make sure we're current while we have the plan before you. So with that, it is executing the water sale proceeds piece that was in the annual report and introduced by Mr. Shields. So I'll be glad to entertain any question. And staff recommends approving as presented before you, and what's presented before you is consistent with the retirement board's unanimous vote on September 12.
All right. Thank you very much. We just had a short discussion about whether the vice mayor and possibly myself should have a disclosure, given our, Mary Beth's direct employment by the school board and my wife's employment by the school board, whether we need to make any sort of disclosure. And I'm looking at the city attorney who's scribbling quickly and furiously. I wonder if you could answer that question for us.
We probably should make that. I'm just, I'll make the notes and get it up to you. But if people have questions in the meantime, before you vote, we can.
All right. Let's do that. So are there any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. This seems like a...
This seems like a fairly modest request, and, let me just say, I'm a little bit surprised that we're picking such a burdensome approach to, you know, rebalance our allocations. I kinda thought that we'd be doing this every quarter, or as we need to, and, you know, I'm looking for maybe some affirmation and some agility here. I know that we, you know, just look at the landscape, the forward project, and, and I've heard the word smoothing before, so it's not a quarter-by-quarter perspective, per se, but if the market does decide to tank, it'll happen very quickly, and all the smoothing in the world is not going to compensate for the fact that we're gonna be losing big amounts of money, which is what happened in the last recession, 2008, and all the recessions before that. And when the market tanks, it's going to go very quickly, and I would think that you would want to have some mechanisms in place. We could probably approve something like that to give you authority to, you know, liquidate as necessary. I think that's, you know, prudent in the upcoming landscape with what we all know with respect to the international markets, and, you know, your first indication might be that, you know, the consumer spending this Christmas is not going to be as robust as people are hoping for, and so that's an early indicator, and then following that with what we see in the housing markets and, and, you know, CDOs and those kinds of things, that we could be in a world hurt by next spring. And I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want you coming before us in summer after all the horses have, after all the geese have flooded, whatever that, whatever involving animals is, but you know what I mean. So ask you to think about, maybe not necessarily tonight as a response, but, and together with those that have the responsibility, and of course fiduciary, to ensure that we do everything necessary to keep our very, very robust retirement accounts intact. Thank you.
Well, I would like to respond, just so that council, the community, and the plan beneficiaries know sort of the framework that we can respond more quickly, regardless of which animal or farm we're working on. Tonight's plan before you is to set the framework and guidelines that the retirement board will operate in within the asset class, but every quarter, they get a very detailed analysis from our financial advisors and go through it and monitor the trends in the analysis, both economically, nationally, and regionally, but then our specific funds under the city code and the authority granted to the retirement board. They can actually respond quickly and by their action, vote to authorize the plan administrator to liquidate. It does not come before council, so we can be more responsive under the retirement board's actions to make sure, as you note, under the fiduciary responsibility, that we're keeping the plan sustainable.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Do these changes, these specific or some of the changes that we made in terms of the allocation, how does that, does that materially impact the administrative expenses for the funds that we're invested in? I mean, that's a big portion of the overall return that we're achieving, depending on the basket that we're investing in?
That was taken into consideration when we made the decision. It was both our and co, our financial advisors and working with the retirement board. So shifting to the one percent cash is not impacting your administrative or investment fees, and they looked at the small cap when making that recommendation to minimize that.
Okay. And then, yeah, just generally speaking, because sometimes the international equities are more expensive if they're from a fund perspective, and maybe this is just from my own edification, but the large-cap equities, mid-cap, small-cap, are these, are these index fund investments that we're invested in, or? And if you, I can just browse through that report around midnight tonight.
You are very welcome to.
I'm not sure it'll be done, I'm not sure it'll be done.
I'm looking for investment strategies myself to navigate the upcoming.
Right. So, so the pension plans, just with the size of the assets that we have, those are in actively managed funds, even this large, small, and mid-cap. We've had discussions, we continue to have discussions about whether that's appropriate and whether particularly for large cap with a, if we wanted to move to index funds, but for now, we feel like being in actively managed funds makes sense. We specifically choose managers that have a more defensive posture, so that if those, when those downturns happen, we hope that the downturns are a little less, go down a little less. So that's on the pension plans. For the OPEB plan, where that's a smaller plan, those are in index funds, because that is a smaller pot of money, it makes sense to keep those in index.
Yeah, my two cents of the index funds, it's a lot cheaper. They seem to perform just as well, if not better, than the actively managed, but that's for you guys to decide.
We continue to monitor that, and that's probably a quarterly discussion that we have.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly may be reading a disclosure.
I am, thank you. I would like to say that before council votes, I want to make a statement that as a school board employee, I am a beneficiary of the pension plan. I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. However, I can act fairly impartially and in the public interest.
All right, let me have that also. My, I'm not sure my wife is actually covered by this plan, but I'm gonna read it in abundance of caution. Before council votes, I wish to make a statement, as my wife is an employee of the school board, I may be a beneficiary, my family may be a beneficiary of the pension plan. However, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter, and I can act fairly impartially and in the public interest. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt TR 19-35.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Thank you, counsel. We have TR 19-33, Resolution to Endorse the City of Falls Church Shared Mobility Devices Demonstration Project.
All right, welcome back.
So, Ms. Carrie Odenino will give the staff report. In your staff report, there are changes since the work session, and those are noted in gray, and we'll review those tonight, but what we're requesting is authorization from the city council to move forward with this pilot program, which would be one year, a one-year pilot for shared mobility devices, AKA scooters. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Odenino. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of city council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm working on the city's shared mobility devices pilot program. I'm the lead staff member on the program. Changes that have been made to the proposed program since the October 21st work session are highlighted in gray in the staff report. Terms of the request, if a locality does not implement an ordinance or pilot program by January 1, 2020, shared mobility devices companies can operate in that locality as authorized by legislation passed by the General Assembly earlier this year. Staff is requesting that council authorize a one-year demonstration project or pilot program to allow private companies to offer shared scooters and other similar devices within the public right-of-way. Staff is seeking approval of the memorandum of agreement, program document, and permit application documents associated with this demonstration project. This staff report provides the draft pilot program city staff has prepared that will enable the city to evaluate and tailor its policies on e-scooters and other shared mobility devices. For background, shared mobility devices include motorized scooters, skateboards, bicycles, or electric power-assisted bicycles. These devices typically are shared among riders, operated by private companies, and are enabled by technology or apps. Shared mobility devices are also frequently dockless, meaning that they park in public spaces and lock to themselves in an app, and shared mobility devices are frequently used for social or entertainment trips, shopping or errands, and as a first-mile-last-mile solution by individuals traveling to and from rail transit, as well as for other short Moving forward, as a part of the pilot evaluation process and in any pilot extension or ordinance processes, city staff will consult with city council as well as boards and commissions for feedback on the shared mobility use devices, demonstration project program, and any proposed Staff has included definitions of a bicycle, electric power-assisted bicycle, and motorized skateboard or foot scooter to the staff report, so these devices do not include segways or Recent research on scooters is provided in the staff report. Looking at traffic laws, motorized skateboards, scooters, bicycles, or electric power-assisted bicycles have all the rights and duties applicable to the driver of a vehicle per state code. Expanding shared mobility devices into the city is generally supported by adopted city policies, including the Mobility for All Modes chapter of the city's transportation master plan, which establishes a vision for expanded transportation mode choice and stronger connections to the regional transportation system. The General Assembly legislation is, as was mentioned earlier, also per city code, Section 26, 109. Riders fourteen years of age or younger are required to wear a protective helmet. And regional context, information about regional context was discussed at work session and is provided in the staff report. So for the proposed pilot program, in terms of locations where devices are permitted to operate, staff is recommending that shared-use mobility device users in the City of Falls Church be encouraged to ride on the street except for Route 29 and Route 7, and be allowed on the sidewalk. In terms of parking locations for the devices, shared mobility devices must be parked in a manner that doesn't impede pedestrian traffic or other uses as noted in the MOA. Staff is recommending that devices not be limited to parking in designated areas, and that they may be parked in other areas as appropriate. Also, in terms of parking, city staff will identify designated parking locations for shared-use mobility devices. In terms of speed, staff is recommending a max speed of 20 miles per hour on a motorized bicycle or bicycle, and 15 miles per hour on a motorized scooter or skateboard in the street, and six miles per hour on the sidewalk. In terms of safety features, staff is recommending that a speedometer be required on each device for minimum age. Sixteen years old is the minimum, though many apps have a minimum age of 18 years old. In terms of users per device, tandem riding on devices as prohibited, and a limit of one rider at a time per device. In terms of number of companies in the pilot, staff is recommending a limit of one operator and a fleet of 50 to 75 scooters. With regard to fees, city staff is recommending a $5,000 upfront permit fee. Staff removed the right-of-way use fee due to concerns about staff time associated with administering the right-of-way use fee and overall fees as they compare to other jurisdictions in the area. In terms of applying for a permit to the demonstration project, the process will include an MOA, business license, applicable business taxes, permit application, and a permit fee to offset the city's oversight costs. And in the event that two or more applications are received, per device type, a committee will meet to discuss applications and conduct an evaluation of each, using criteria including a full and complete application package, responsiveness to service requests related to complaints, equity pricing and access, information outreach and safety programs, and approaches to parking management. In terms of timing, the pilot program will receive operator applications starting in December. Companies have reported that they would begin deploying devices in the spring, and the permit application, MOA, and program document are attached.
All right, thank you very much. So I'm gonna open it up now to questions and comments, and I know there were a lot of questions and comments at our work session. The idea was that we were gonna see where we land tonight, but I do think we should err on the side of contemplation, and if it turns out there's not a consensus on some issues, we may consider deferring final action until we have some more information. There's no members of the public here. I imagine this is of public interest, and I'm a little surprised there's nobody here. I would certainly like to hear from more members of the public about this. I know Mr. Snyder as well, who had some strong opinions, is not here tonight, which I think would be helpful to have him present. So just a few thoughts of mine before we get into the heart of this matter, but why don't we go ahead and open it up to questions and comments from folks?
Since Mr. Snyder's not here, can I just ask the liability question? So, I'm riding the scooter, and I do something foolish and crash into Ross's car. It's my fault, it's not the equipment's fault. Who pays to fix Ross's car?
One, we will note, can I just note two things? One, Councilmember Snyder did ask that it be announced, and it may have been announced at the beginning of the meeting, but he is away on international travel, working on green finance initiatives, and so it would be good to learn what he brings back from that conference. Two, there are additional provisions in the MOA about insurance coverage, to require insurance for individuals, and Ms. Odenino, I think, spoke to this, but there's some of the changes we made in response to Mr. Snyder's questions, and those are taken directly from the Arlington County MOA. I just wanted to note those things, but in terms of probably your specific question, we probably should let the attorney speak to that.
This wasn't meant to be, all my questions are gonna be in the vein of, you know, trying to make this work, just let me begin by saying that. So this is not meant to be a gotcha question. It is a question that was posed to me today at lunchtime, and I said, I don't know, I'll ask.
Okay. So if the scooter rider drives into a third-party's car, it's likely that the city would have, would not have liability. As between that, if it's a parked car and it's clearly the scooter rider's fault, it could be their responsibility, but it could be, I mean, I would think they would have responsibility for it, whether the car owner is gonna be able to find that person and know who it was and collect their money is a different question.
Just, you know, in terms of my personal insurance coverage, do I need to have a rider on my vehicle policy that says that whatever vehicle I'm driving, I'm covered? If I hit Ross's car with my car or with my rented scooter?
Well, I think it would be the same kind of situation as if you were riding a bicycle around the city and you ran into somebody's car and dented it.
Your personal policy would be expected to cover something like that.
I would, I would think so, yes, your, any personal liability you have. But I, again, I'm not sure that that's always easy to sort out in the practical realm.
Okay, well, that's kind of a question I would love to be able to give somebody a simple answer to. The one vendor versus two vendors, some of these are gonna poach on Ms. Hardy's notes, which I also read. The one vendor versus two vendors, my impression down in Roanoke at the municipal league was that, you know, jurisdictions of any size were encouraging more than one vendor, just sort of for the monopoly reason, you know, that if you have two vendors, they, you know, compete a bit with each other, and if one of them's not behaving well, then there's always the threat out there that says, you know, we can go all in with the one that's behaving better. And then there's the matter of, you know, the speculation, some of these companies are really just in business to be sold, and if we are unlucky enough that we pick a vendor who decides to sell into some other company, maybe that other company does or does not want to serve us. So is, I know Arlington has more than one, and I understand the staff simplicity of maybe having just one, but is there some competitive advantages to us, to having two?
Well, I think, I think this was kind of a, more of a staff decision, but it is true that if, I mean, if you had one vendor and they turned out to be a problem, you could terminate them and get a different vendor if someone was available. But I think it came down more to the number of scooters that would be deployed, and whether a, an operator would be interested in participating, given the number of scooters they could deploy if we had more than one operator.
So you're basically believing that our market is... So you're basically believing that our market is not going to tolerate more than 100 scooters, and no company's going to want to bring in fewer than, fewer than 100. So two companies together are not going to do 50 apiece. Is that the thinking?
There, so in conversations with operators, there were a couple that noted, well, there were two that noted that through their market analysis, they weren't, they weren't planning to deploy in the city. There was another that said it would depend on what the city's policy ended up being. I think if we did, there are two, two companies that, that based on conversations, I think, would deploy at, you know, around 50. So...
You think there might be two that would bring in as few as 50?
Right.
Okay. Well, I don't know. I'll let others, I know everybody else has got questions. I just wanted to sort of start things out. My inclination would be to go with two, not just one, for reasons previously stated. I would like to understand a little bit more about the insurance, just because that is a question that I feel like people will ask. Maybe it's more detailed than the staff report. I don't know, but I'll save that as questions for later, or maybe others will ask them.
I do, sorry. So I did add some language that was in Arlington's most recent ordinance around insurance, and I don't know what this applies to, but for property damage in one accident, $50,000. So I'm not sure if that would apply, if that could cover the rider or not, but it's on page 10 of the MOA.
And I was just thinking, the simplest way to think about that is, I think, like a rental car. I think the same type of applications of liability would apply as though you were driving a rental car and had an accident.
But of course, a lot of people don't take the coverage on a rental car. Some do, some don't.
That's correct, but you're, you're, you don't, a lot of people don't take the damage, but they usually have liability, and their, their private insurance covers their...
Yeah, I'm just saying, every time I go to the airport and make that decision, I'm never totally sure what happens if somebody hits me or I hit somebody. And I just, I want to encourage the use of these things, and I want some simple and easy to understand answer to insurance, so that nobody worries about, you know, do I check the box on the app that says I'm only, I'm waiving the collision or whatever? I mean, I just don't, maybe it's not a problem anywhere else, but...
How does it happen on Bike Share? I assume we addressed this before.
Good question. What happens if I hit Ross's car with my Bike Share?
I believe there is insurance provided.
Why don't we get a definite answer? So it seems to me there's an answer out there. This is down all across the United States.
Yeah, let me do a little bit of work on it. I'm sorry, I wasn't here for the work session, but I'll try to get a little more detail on that and get something to you in advance of a meeting, or certainly if you decide to move forward tonight in advance of us.
It's just something basically, what the default settings are, generally speaking, with these companies. Or what insurance do you actually get if you require a minimum insurance? What coverage is that? Who's covered and what amounts?
And I think there's fairly good coverage for the company itself and indemnity, but the liability as between others is the question.
Yes, I'm not so worried about the company. I figure they'll take care of themselves, but I think the real question is, you know, what happens to Ross's car? I think they're all concerned about that.
Right. They are required to have good insurance, but we will get a further answer for you.
Okay. That sounds good. Phil, any more questions, or is that it for you for the moment?
Right. If a purchased insurance policy is furnished, that is so passive, I'm not sure who's doing the purchasing and who's doing the furnishing, but yeah.
Well, we'll find out an answer by the next occasion here. All right, who else has got questions? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So in that same vein of damage to property, for scooters that are left in right of ways where they're not supposed to be, call it parked in the middle of the street or in a parking spot, Phil happens to be coming in hot into City Hall and hits one with his Osmobile, and it's parked in a right of way. Who's responsible for that? That's another question. You'll have to answer that question now, Ms. Odenino, but I'd be curious to know if folks park them where they're not supposed to be, and somebody accidentally runs over one, what's the, what's the liability there on either party, and who takes care of that? I saw Mrs. Hardy's comments related to Arlington County's procedures and protocols, which was very helpful, and I saw that we had decided to take away the per trip fee of 25 cents, which was already high, and it seems to be because that's a burden on staff resource in terms of us tracking, auditing, and essentially getting our money.
I did also have a conversation with one operator that, that it was high, and they might have to look at their fees, so...
Okay. I was just curious to know if there's anywhere else, anywhere else out in the country, smaller jurisdictions that have outsourced to a company to manage this on their behalf, either tracking the revenue, the number of per trips, and obviously that costs money, but I hate the idea of giving up the per trip fee. So it's something that I would be interested in knowing if there are companies out there that would help service that resource for us to take a portion of the fee, for us to be able to track that, which leads me to my, maybe last question. After this pilot program, let's say we go with the one company, and I understand the scooter per capita makes sense. I don't know if, just from a competitive perspective, whether it makes sense to do one or not, but I understand the mechanics and the numbers of whether it makes sense for one company to deploy 75 scooters, or two companies to only do 50, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I get that. After this pilot program, if we decide that, well, I guess after this pilot program, from an ordinance perspective, do we still limit the number of companies that deploy here in the city? Or is this pilot program to limit the number of companies as part of this pilot program just for the pilot program?
Just for the pilot.
Just for the pilot, so...
But, I mean, a decision would be made when you went to a permanent ordinance about how you were going to limit it.
So in the permanent ordinance, we could say only one company is allowed to operate.
Or we could open it up.
Or we could open it up. So my question is, looking at the mechanics of the payment and the tax revenue that would come in from this if it was a per trip fee, if we only allow one company to deploy here, but somebody riding a scooter from another company leaves it in Falls Church, somebody else picks it up and goes, does that mean that we get no revenue, and we could effectively become a holding ground for all scooters even though we've only allowed for one company?
So my understanding is for that the scooter would slow down to five miles per hour when it...
Goes through the geofencing?
Right. Some companies assess a penalty fee if you park them outside their designated areas. And I think, also don't go. That's my understanding.
Okay. We're fairly confident that would be the case. I just don't want to become a graveyard for scooters for companies that we're not allowing to be in the city, which means we're missing out on revenue from those. I would just, I wouldn't want to be, I would want to be sure about that. Otherwise, you would just open it up to everybody.
I mean, in some respects, that's the case right now. I mean, there's scooters in the city, there's just no one licensed to operate them in the city yet. And so how that's going to change with this pilot, you know, the geofencing is the concept, but do we have a guarantee that that's the case for every one of those companies? I'm not sure we can, I'm not sure we know that for a fact at this point.
I don't think all of them are doing it.
I don't know how we can regulate someone who we're not allowing to do business here.
Right.
Hey, you can't do business here.
Yeah, it's a concern of, I understand, so for the pilot program, I would say my position is a little more flexible in terms of what my initial concerns are, because we're still trying to prove this out, but once we get beyond pilot, if we decide, you know what, we're all in for scooters, I would want to have as a detailed conversation about the mechanics that we put in place as part of our ordinance to make sure that we are being compensated appropriately for whether it's one company allowed to do business here or all companies. Again, I don't want to become a graveyard for scooters, and then we have to deal with it, and we're not getting any money out of it, because we are cut through in some cases, in many cases.
All right. Other questions? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Ms. Odenino. Last week I asked a question about making sure that the scooter company that comes to Falls Church or companies is also working in our neighboring jurisdiction. And you said you thought they would be? The two that you're talking to right now, are they working in Arlington?
I've, I've spoken with, I think, like, five of the operators. I do expect that we'll receive an application from an out-of-the-area operator.
Okay. So I think you should include that either in the MOA or the criteria on page one here of the demonstration project. If you add an A6 that the company is operating in a neighboring jurisdiction, because it just doesn't make sense for us to have somebody from out of area just come and operate in our little pond.
There was some concern from other staff about limiting, like, limiting someone from out of the area from a competition perspective.
Because we would be saying you can't come?
Uh, yeah.
It just doesn't seem like it meets our needs, though. If we're trying to get people to East Falls Church Metro, and the company isn't operating in Arlington, then it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
I think ultimately, we also want to make sure they're responsive, right? So if there's issues and they're not located in the DC area, then that's, they're not going to be responsive to the complaints and questions, or inevitably going to get...
And actually, if it's an out-of-area company that's operating here, that's different than a, as long as one of their base of operations is near us, that's what I'm most concerned about. And then, yes, also that if they're local, so that they can respond to concerns.
So while you guys were talking, I was reading the user agreements for a couple of scooter companies. And so Lime, for example, says they carry all necessary insurance associated with the vehicles as required by law, and then an article says that they actually offer a million in liability coverage for any incident, which guarantees any rider who has an accident on our platform can get help. So there, at least that's Lime's. I don't know whether they're in consideration, but I assume this is a new territory for many people, so they're probably all figuring it out right now, too. At least that's...
Yeah, I wouldn't count that to be all it's, all it seems to be on its face.
Yes. You should probably actually have Carol look at those user agreements and what they're committing to.
So other questions, comments? I've got a few. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Carrie, for incorporating a lot of the updates we talked about. One of the learnings from Arlington was their revision, at least their planned revision, to actually allow scooters on sidewalks, with the caveat that they won't allow them on sidewalks if there's dedicated bike lane. Have we given thought to whether we would do something similar?
So there were some concerns, I guess, certain bike lanes in the city where the cars, the adjacent vehicles are driving sort of quickly, and that we expect, we, if we did sort of require sidewalk riding, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a way to really enforce that.
So my thinking on it is, I read their, their staff report that included a lot of that user feedback after their year of pilot. And ultimately, scooter riders, just like bicyclists, don't want to mix with traffic, nor do they want to mix with pedestrians. So I think the concern we have here is that we don't, because we've been talking about walkability so much, we don't want pedestrians to feel like they're subservient to scooters and bicyclists. And so I think the feedback from Arlington is that where there's dedicated lanes, that's actually the best place for scooters to go, along with bicycles. Clearly, we don't have enough of that in the whole area, but if we could prioritize kind of where people should go on the street, like pedestrians, you know, get priority on the sidewalk, and where there's dedicated lanes, scooters and bikes should be in those dedicated lanes. And if we don't have enough of them, that probably means we need to put more, especially if there's a strong uptake for this in the city. That would be my recommendation, mainly just seeing the experience of what Arlington experienced of those riders, that they actually prefer dedicated lanes as opposed to mixing with pedestrians, because nobody wants to mow any pedestrians down either.
So other comments? I've got a couple. One, I don't like the idea of just having a single operator. I think that you want competition, and I think just having a sort of a sole source contract is generally not the best way to get the best service and to get the best quality. I, I do have concerns about the scooters on sidewalks. Our sidewalks are pretty narrow in a lot of places. I mean, practically all our sidewalks, other than the main streets, are four feet generally, and we got telephone poles and all sorts of things. And so I'd have concerns about the scooters on sidewalks. We don't have enough bike lanes to really allow people to use bike lanes, and so I'm not sure what the answer is, but I do think there is some very tight sidewalks here in the city that don't really have room for scooters and pedestrians. Let's see what else I've got. I do think this issue of what companies operate here, it's critical we align with our neighbors, right? The idea for a lot of this is to get people to metros that are in other jurisdictions. And so if they just putter out, or they stop running, or whatever, I don't know how that works for anybody. And we have two metro stations that people might want to go to, one in Fairfax County, one in Arlington. So I think we've got to figure out a solution that works in both jurisdictions, and not just, you know, hey, I got geofencing, I'm going to just putter along, I've been going 15 miles an hour, and I'm going five. I don't think that's going to work. And so I think we do need to get companies that are operating in our neighboring jurisdictions and figure out a way, because otherwise, if we don't allow these other companies to come in, and we have geofencing or whatever, then it's not going to be useful, I don't think, for our citizens who may want to use these to commute other places. So I'm not sure I have a great solution to that, but I think we've got to make sure there's sort of interoperability, so that people who want to get to the metro can get there, and then they can get a ride back on something that's going to operate in both jurisdictions. And so I don't know enough about the different companies that are doing what and where, but I do think we need to be absolutely cognizant of that, because that is, I think, one of the purposes of using these, is to get people to and from metro stations. So I think that needs to be one of our primary considerations, is, you know, are these going to work to and from metros, and are they going to stop running, or what's going to Let me think of what else I've got here. I'd be curious, now, how many vendors are working in Arlington? Do you know the number of companies that are...
Seven.
Seven? Okay. And have you spoken to all seven of those about coming to Falls Church, or they're interested in coming to Falls Church?
No, I've only, I've only spoken to five. Not everyone was responsive.
Okay. And out of those five, how many were interested in coming to Falls Church?
There was only one that reported definitely being interested.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so if we got someone, I guess if we got someone who worked in, that one is basically, right, if we wanted to go to, someone wants to come from here to a metro in Arlington, for example, East Falls Church Metro, and they were a company that didn't operate in Arlington, other than that one company, right, so how would that work? If somebody rides them, I presume, to Arlington, or maybe they wouldn't be allowed in Arlington? What happens to a company that's not an operator in Arlington if they were to, someone would take that scooter in Arlington, stop running at the border, does nobody pick it up? It waits for two days because they don't operate there? How does that work?
I think for some of the companies, the scooter slows down and sends you a notification on your phone. Obviously, for, for others, they allow you to continue, since there are scooters in the city that have been able to do that, so...
Okay. I just want to make sure we have some, you know, whoever gets on a scooter can get where they want to go, and they can also get back. Mr. Z?
Yeah, I also come down on the side of having more competition, so I think the, just having one, and I understand the kind of argument with regard to scale, but I think that puts us in a Washington Flyer paradigm, which doesn't work for anybody, at least of all the people that operate Washington Flyer, so. And we do have to do better about being able to cross borders. Slowing the scooter down to five miles an hour may or may not work. Probably won't. I think that a great deal of the ridership, and of course, the pilot program will... and, of course, the pilot program will, will tell us whether the theories, any of these theories are, are real or not, that, you know, there's, we are just so small that Metro is going to take a large share of the demographic that we care about. I am, at the end of all this, just, we can deliberate about whether they should be allowed on sidewalks or on the streets, or, and I'm saying, I'm not paranoid, but I am walking my dog. And this morning, a scooter rider came down the street and jumped right on the sidewalk on Park Avenue right in front of me. And I'm thinking, oh, is this allowed? And then this nice scooter person stops at the crosswalks, and I can't get across because he's blocking the sidewalk. And he goes down Park, crosses, and goes down Park for half a block, then gets back on the sidewalk again. So I am adamant that we need to have regulations in place. So I'm not screaming at this guy, well, walk my dog. I'm doing this for my health and for the dog's health. But there it is, scooter rider, this morning. Thank God he wasn't playing MC Hammer.
Counsel, I do want to mention one thing. If, if there is interest in prohibiting scooters from riding on the sidewalks, overall, that will need to be done by an ordinance. So if, it may be that we should get sort of an ordinance ready for your next meeting, if you really want to consider doing that, because the state law requires that we do it by ordinance, not just as part of our pilot program.
Well, let me just finish and say I would be in favor of an ordinance that is more restrictive with regard to where scooters can ride, per the city attorney's comments.
Are there other comments on that particular aspect? What do people think about scooters and sidewalks?
Well, so if you don't allow them on sidewalks, then nobody in their right mind is going to drive on Washington abroad on a scooter.
Let's say there was, for that particular street, which I think, those particular streets, those two streets, put them aside for a second, and say that they may need special consideration. Other than that, what do you think of having scooters be prohibited on the sidewalks?
I, I'd like to express it the other way and say I would be in favor of scooters being on the road, you know, in hopefully sufficient numbers that they capture people's attention and, you know, help slow other vehicular traffic down. So, yeah, I would, I would rather sidewalks be for walkers and the streets be for powered rolling vehicles of whatever kind.
All right. So I want to take, as you, on those two streets, you have a feeling that they should be on the sidewalks, but the other ones, you deny. Is that...
I mean, if I had my druthers, I would draw a map up that would show people how to get pretty much everywhere they need to in Falls Church, particularly from the metro stations, without having to use broader Washington except to cross them at a crosswalk. That was my initial thinking when we started talking about this, but I was, you know, persuaded that being too prescriptive like that is just going to, you know, kill the thing right outright. So...
All right. How about other folks?
Well, I think if you're a scooter operator, rider, that you'll quickly figure out that being abroad in Washington aren't going to be your favorite places unless you actually have a destination or origination there. And, yeah, I think that, you know, we should be permissive with regard to those two metro affairs. But if you're traveling through the city, you're not going to be, you're going to be on Park. You're not going to be on Broad.
All right. Other end of the, yes, Ms. Hardy?
So I think this is where Arlington and Alexandria started their pilot a year. They banned them from their sidewalks. And then they realized after a year that people prefer riding them where they're safer. And where they, again, are protected lanes, they will go in the protected lanes. And where they're not, they will make the choice between sidewalk and street. And this is why they're coming up with a different one. So we could certainly start where they started a year ago. But what I was hoping is that since we were one of the latecomers, we would be learning from them. And so we could adopt what they're doing now, which is a mixed speed, or we could start where they did a year ago, which is banning them from sidewalk.
Well, that's great, Ms. Hardy, but, you know, I am, if you haven't been run over or close to being run over by a scooter while you're walking your dog, you don't see my point of view. But if you're out there with your kid, not your dog, your kid, or two of them, and you're not paying attention, and scooter happens to bear down on them, I think your opinion would change very quickly.
I don't have either a kid or a dog, but, you know, my inclination would be to, I mean, we're not going to be able to enforce the speed limit on the sidewalk, right? We've known that. It says the police will not be proactive in enforcing the six mile per hour speed limit. So in essence, there will not be a speed limit on the sidewalk. So I don't know. I would be willing to, even though Alexandria and Arlington have learned, whatever it is they've learned, just anecdotally, what I hear from both those jurisdictions is, you know, there's a pretty good scooter war going on with pedestrians in both those places. And I'm interested that Arlington is changing. I'd be inclined to, to start out with the notion that, except on Broad and Washington, which are just unsafe to the scooter to be on the street, I would try to keep the scooters off of sidewalks everywhere else in the city. And I'm not sure about Broad and Washington, because there are plenty of places along Broad and Washington where we don't have very wide sidewalks. I mean, the scooter is going to get in front of BDOs, and, you know, even a scooter can't get through there. So we'd have some work to do, even on Broad and Washington, to make it usable by scooters.
Mr. Lichtenhouse, did you have an opinion?
I do have an opinion. Sidewalks are primarily for walkers. And if you can't have safe refuge from being barreled down on by somebody going 15 miles an hour on a scooter, then where are folks supposed to go? And I have been yelled at. I do have kids and a dog. And I've been yelled at by scooters flying up behind me. Heads up, watch out. And I have to turn and jump for my life as they come bolting down. And these are now 30-somethings headed to work. In some cases, these are kids. So, while I like the idea of encouraging multiple modes of transportation, if I could be assured that the speed of those scooters on sidewalks were limited to really no fast and a slow jog of a human not on a scooter, then I would be in support of that. However, I feel that it will be virtually impossible to limit scooters from going their allowable speed on the roads, on the sidewalks as well. And generally speaking, unless we've got a solution where we know folks are not going to be run over, and folks that are walking on sidewalks don't feel safe, or people walking dogs on sidewalks don't, don't feel safe, then I think that we've got to start out prohibiting, even if, as Ms. Hardy is probably foretelling here, we may end up in the same situation as Arlington. But I certainly don't want to start out that way, because sidewalks primarily are for walking.
Something else coming?
No, I was just waiting for an applause, or, that's fine.
All right, I want to give you some applause.
To be clear, I've got dogs and kids, and I probably walk as much as probably the mayor does, and run on the streets. And so absolutely, I believe sidewalks are the priority for pedestrians. I'm just pointing out the practicality of banning them from sidewalks, because we won't be able to enforce it. We don't have enough protected facilities for bikes and scooters. And so I think where we're going to end up is eventually looking at where Arlington and Alexandria are. So I'm just pointing out what's happened elsewhere. And I just think it's wise and prudent for us to know where they've been.
So I don't disagree with Ms. Hardy, but I would note a few things. One, I work in Arlington, so I'm there a lot, that most of their sidewalks are wider, so that almost any major street has got 10-foot clear, often a 20 or more foot setback. And so there's a lot more room for scooters in Arlington sidewalks than ours. A lot of our sidewalks, even in our city as it stands right now, the street I live on, people walk in the road regularly, because even the sidewalk isn't, isn't wide enough for families, because it's four feet, and it's got a telephone pole, and it's got a wall next to it. So I do think we ought to err on the side of protecting our walkers and our pedestrians. And then maybe we can be more open as time goes on. But I guess I would probably start in a, in a more conservative place and kind of work our way backwards, as opposed to being sort of, you know, anything goes off, off day one. But I'd be interested in hearing. Vice Mayor, do you have any additional thoughts on that, or...
I'm going to agree with the, I have no thoughts on this.
Okay. All right.
I think she said sidewalks are for walkers.
Well, I, what I'm thinking of is the...
Walkers, runners, joggers.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm thinking of the concerns we have for...
Walkers, runners, joggers.
Streets like Noland, where people are worried about cars driving fast and pedestrians, and then to put scooters on the street like Noland, where there isn't a sidewalk anyway. That, I'm just, that's what I'm thinking about right now, is just the, this, if it's a quiet neighborhood street, no problem to have a, have a scooter there. But if we are actually thinking about these streets that we're already worried about being congested, that's my concern. But, but we're just going to have to give it a shot and see what happens.
But I mean, presumably, the scooter drivers or riders are going to make their own judgment, hey, this street's really busy, I'm not going to ride on this street. I mean, you would think that's what people would say, is that this street's got too much traffic, therefore I'll pick a quieter street for my route. So I don't know. I mean, I think we have to sort of start somewhere, and that's the real question, is where do we start? We may end up somewhere else a year or two from now, but I think the question is really, again...
Just a question on this, though. I assume this ordinance that we're talking about, potentially sidewalk versus road, this is going to apply to anybody with a motorized scooter, not just the companies that are using them for shared riding devices, correct?
Private ones?
Private scooters?
Yeah, that's correct.
Because we have some folks in the city, quite a number, actually, that own these. And I think they may want to voice their concerns as well over this. So for anyone listening that prefers that mode of transportation, they ought to speak up.
Something we can do tonight is, we've advanced the ball. I don't know if we really want to take action tonight. It's possible we could say, look, we're going to give two weeks or whatever our next regular work session is, and defer our actual vote on this, to give some time to the public to hear a little bit more about what we've discussed tonight and weigh in as well. And then maybe to get some answers on a few of the questions we've raised. I don't know what people think of that as a, as an idea. Okay.
Could I ask a question about segways? You've mentioned segways.
You can make a, do you want to segue into a discussion about what...
I need a segue to talk about segways. Boy, you're sharp. Why, why, or segway's not a good thing? We don't want somebody coming in and renting, like, segways, if that was an option? I know that scooters are all the rage today, but, you know, this is, this is just one of the eight or 10 times over the city's history that we have tried to solve the last mile, first mile problem, and it's not going to be the last. And I'm, to me, a segway looks a lot like a scooter, because you stand up and, I'm just, are they included in this?
So they, they don't fall into the definition of what, the legislation that was passed by the General Assembly.
So what does that mean? Does that mean we have our own latitude on regulating segways?
So we're not regu, we're not regulating them with this?
Not, we're not changing anything?
Right.
We're not doing anything?
Right.
Okay. So if I had one today, this wouldn't affect it?
Right.
Okay.
All right. So why don't we, why don't we go ahead and continue this conversation to maybe our next regular meeting. At that time, maybe you could give some thought to an ordinance for consideration about sidewalk, or scooters and sidewalk use, as we've discussed this evening, and then also the answers to some of the questions we've raised. And then we'll continue this conversation, maybe with some additional public input or thought on the matter. So why don't move on then and defer, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, do you want to take a vote to defer it, or, so that that might be the best plan, to have a decision by the council that, of what you're going to do?
Sure. When is our next regular meeting? Do you know the date?
November 12th.
So we would defer consideration till the 12th? Defer action till the 12th?
If we have an ordinance, then the ordinance would need to have a first reading and a second reading. And we were actually hoping to avoid that, and really just sort of characterize this as a pilot, and then take care of ordinances once we've learned from the pilot program. That was the, the goal. And so this is, this is different. And part of it was to keep staff freed up to do other projects, because we know from other localities, we could spend a lot of time on this, almost unlimited amounts of time. And so we were trying to be a bit streamlined about it. Granted, these are serious issues, but...
And let me, let me just note that the, the only time you need an ordinance is if you have an entire ban on the riding of the scooters on any sidewalks in the city. You will be able, if you don't have an entire ban, there are ways in which you can create areas where they can't go on the sidewalks and things like that. I mean, that may require a lot of fine tuning as you see how things work. But I, I think, my sense is that people are not probably wanting to do an entire ban on riding them on the sidewalks, because there's places you don't want people riding them in the street. So given that, we can probably, we can move forward with the pilot as it is, and work on regulating some areas where we want to put up signs that say, no scooters on the sidewalk.
So I'm not sure we need to have signs in every street. I guess if we can regulate the fact that, it seemed like at least most people here tonight thought that not having sidewalks on, or not having scooters on sidewalks, except for Broad and Washington, was a good idea. How to implement that, I don't know, but I don't think having a sign, a sign on every street in our city saying, no scooters here, is the way to go. So I don't know what kind of, either it's an ordinance, a regulation, or whatever you might want to characterize it as, but maybe you could prepare that for our, our next meeting.
Yeah, I think that can be worked into part of the pilot program.
As long as it's legally enforceable, the police could say, hey, you have notice, you can't ride a sidewalk on, except for here or there. And if we can enforce that, I think we probably would be agreeable to that. All right. So do we need to make, then you would suggest or recommend a motion to defer action on this matter until November 12th?
Yes, I would recommend that.
But could we, so, so we don't sort of repeat this next time? Could we actually get the guidance on a couple of key things?
All right. What do you need?
One company or multiple companies? So the trade-off there was how many were going to be in the city. So we went with one to go have one company that actually could have a viable program. We could significantly lower the fees and have multiple companies. I think those are the two things that have to play off with each other. We had staff discussions of having a really low barrier of entry and have everybody who's operating in Arlington, hey, you can operate in the city, essentially just ride Arlington's program. But you have to understand, with seven companies in here, there's really not going to be, you know, there's seven companies to manage and things like that. But that would get to that value that you were pointing, of making it seamless. We could do it that way. But we do need to make some choices. And rather than have it sort of tee up and have you not like it again, it'd be good to get some guidance on, I think, this balance between seamlessness versus a low number of companies to manage, number of units. Do you care more about the fee, or do you care more about the success of the program? May, I'm sorry, I should probably tee up the questions a little bit cleaner. But we do need some guidance on these things. We're going to just repeat this discussion next time.
All right. So there's one question. Any other questions?
How many of the, I'm for the success of the program. I'm for at least two companies. And I am biased towards companies that also operate in Arlington and Fairfax, I guess, if there is such a thing.
Would you be okay with lowering the fee? Because if there's two companies...
I would rather, I would rather, I'd rather have a, more scooters doing more rides, paying us more per ride, even if we can't audit it, you know? I'd be willing to go on the honor system that, you know, their credit cards are going to feed money to us. And so I would, the barrier, the 5,000 per unit or whatever you were going to charge, I would be okay with that being lower in trade-off for hoping that the program works and that we make money per, per ride.
All right. Other folks?
My, my opinion is, the way that I'm looking at this, this is a pilot program. This is not policy that is forever written in stone. So I am amenable to whatever the rest of the folks, or majority of folks on council, want to do as part of this program to ensure that we get good data and metrics, to make an informed decision at the end of this pilot program as to the type of ordinances or permanent scooter program that we want to employ at the end of the 12-month period. So if it's one company, two companies, I'm okay with that. If we have to lower our fees for this 12-month period, I am also okay with that, because, again, this is 12 months. And I would rather be fully informed by allowing more companies and lower barrier to entry, now that I'm talking through it out loud, to make sure that we have good data to see how this plays out, to see if we need to make a decision, as to be much more strict in terms of how we permanently roll this out, or semi-permanently roll it out.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think in the pilot period, we're not looking to make money. So I think we want to know how, what the uptake is going to be. I would also believe that people aren't going to be incented to not over-clutter the streets, because if they put too many scooters in the companies, the scooters would probably be better used elsewhere. So they probably wouldn't put too many than what the demand actually will be. So I also believe that the free market will work in this place, where they'll put the right number based on what is the best use of their assets.
So are you saying you'd like to have not one or two, but the full gamut of whoever's in Arlington?
I think seven's probably too many, but, you know, it'd be nice to get a handful of the same company. same companies in Arlington.
Okay.
I think at least two. But, as Letty just said, seven is a lot. Any of them that come should also be operating in Arlington. And I'd be okay with a lower barrier of entry, fee-wise. I do have a question about, if a ride starts in Arlington and ends in Falls Church, is the fee split between? Or is it point of origin?
Origin.
So if they start in Falls Church and go to Arlington, the fees go to Falls Church? If it stays within Falls Church, it's Falls Church. But if it starts in Arlington and comes here, we don't get any money out of that?
Right.
Okay.
All right, Phil, what do you think? Did you already say your piece? Dan?
Yeah, no more than three. Lower the fee to around $3,500. I mean, just chicken feet, whether it's three or two or one. I happen to think that pilots tend to, 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 I mean, it's human nature to have a pilot validated the theory. So I happen to think that whatever we go forward with is, we're going to end up. And of course, interoperability with our region, so. And to the Vice Mayor's point, you know, if this is, if we now have seamless inter-regional interoperability, then maybe you can rework all the MOAs with everybody else, so. Just kind of what it is. Thank you.
All right, is that adequate direction for you?
One last question. Sidewalks, yea or nay?
I think we heard on that one.
So we're, so no, no riding on sidewalks?
Except in Washington Abroad.
What about the streets that don't have sidewalks?
Then you just ride into the street.
So that's okay, though, right?
Yeah, I think the idea, at least the idea I have would be that you would be able to ride on the streets anywhere, and you would actually be required to if there's a sidewalk, unless it's the one on Washington Abroad, given the, you know, narrow width of our sidewalks and the use by other folks. Are you okay with that?
I think that's fine.
Okay. All right, so you got that answer, Wyatt, anymore?
Very good. That, that's very helpful.
All right.
So we will come back at your next meeting.
Okay.
You're talking the whole length of Washington Abroad?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That's really helpful.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your work. We know you've done a whole lot of effort on this, and your staff report is quite thorough, and your research has been as well, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our next item here, which is the Stormwater Task Force. Wyatt?
So this was discussed at work session, and the idea is here to have a citizen task force to work with staff and their engineering consultant to prioritize investments in stormwater improvements in the city. And the city currently is guided by the Watershed Management Plan, Section 5.4, which lists out our projects that are top priorities. We would update that Section 5.4 using a, kind of a ranked criteria that we would develop with this task force. The appointments to this task force, if the council approves this charter tonight, then we will publicize and solicit people to put in an application for this. And then we'll work that through. I've had some discussions with Councilmember Zee just about the appointments process and with the clerk as well. And the goal would be able to get this, the appointments done. We don't have a meeting in November, on November 25th, which is Thanksgiving week. That would actually probably process-wise be the ideal target date. So it looks like we'll probably be shooting for December 9th to get the appointments formalized by City Council, unless we can do it one week earlier. We're not having that meeting at, at the end of November.
The Appointments Committee pledges to meet as often as necessary in order to fill out the slate. The Appointments Committee, the council's Appointments Committee is, is an artifact of council that is created to ensure satisfaction among all of us and transparency. And we intend to do that, as opposed to someone accusing, for example, the city manager of hand-selecting seven people and that's it.
That's right. We don't want that. The idea is to have the deadline for applications be in mid-November, so that we can get them then through the Appointments Committee and get the slate to City Council.
So before we continue on this, we never did vote to defer this matter. The city attorney has not been looking at it, but I thought she might be. So do we want to go ahead and do that right now, a quick motion to defer?
Mayor, I move to adopt, I mean, I move to defer TR 19-33 to the 12th of November.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk? Do we, let me, let me just ask too, is there any member of the public, is the member of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing none, the matter's closed to the public? Madam Clerk, go ahead and take the vote.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, let's continue our conversation. Any more questions, comments about the Stormwater Task Force? Vice Mayor Conley?
Do we envision that there's going to be a City Council member of the Stormwater Task Force, or a City Council liaison to the Stormwater Task Force?
There could be a liaison, but we were not envisioning a member. This is going to report ultimately to the City Council as a whole.
So I would like to request that there not be a member, and if there is a liaison, they do not have a vote if they attend meetings.
Well, these are open meetings, are they not?
Yes, there will be open meetings, and hopefully a lot of the public will come to them, so they'll see the decision-making process.
That's great. I just want to make sure that a City Council member isn't able to vote as a member of the committee. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Conley, or Vice, or Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So I think there's five stormwater areas that were being proposed, and then seven members. Are we thinking that there would be membership from each of those areas, and then two that were not?
I hadn't really thought about it that way. The intent is that everybody on the task force will have on their citywide hat and be looking out for the best use of the, of our stormwater, limited stormwater fees for the benefit, for the most cost-effective solutions. So-
I do think geographic diversity is important, though.
Yes, geographic diversity is actually called out in the, in the resolution, or in the staff report at least, as, as what we're looking for.
Okay.
I mean, I suspect that having people from each of the districts is probably a good idea. You know, if someone's not represented, then they may feel that their interests aren't being fully represented, and maybe their project doesn't get their priority, they might think. And so I'm not sure how exactly to structure this, but I do think it's probably important. It gives some consideration that you have five different districts that have different needs and solutions and the like. So it sort of occurs to me that you probably would want someone from each district, but I'll leave, that's just my two cents. But I think having some at-large people is important, too, so that it doesn't just become all this regionalism. Anyway, sorry, Vice Mayor Conley?
We had also got, one of our public comments was from the Village Preservation Improvement Society, asking for an appointment to this committee. And my sense of that is that if, if a member of VIBUS would like to be on the committee, they should apply and go through the process as every other citizen. But we're not going to do an ex officio position specifically for any board or commission or outside organization. Correct? Does that make sense?
All right, any other comments, questions? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter, saying none? Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt TR 19-34.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Con, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
And can we publicize this as well, and put that out to all the different people who've written in, and let them know that the task force is-
Yes, we will do that.
And let them know how they might apply?
That's right. We'll send them the application, and we also plan to publicize in the news press and, and other ways.
We even email lists from that town hall?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. So let's move on to consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. What are we on to now? Business not in the agenda, any standing, regional committee, council liaison reports? Okay, any council member comments that haven't been made?
Can I ask a question?
All right.
Of the city attorney, we talked about this at a previous meeting. Ms. McCrasky gave us a memo on October 15th regarding the authority to include sexual orientation in the city's non-discrimination ordinances. I would just ask that each of us read that memo, and, and if she could do whatever it is that's required for us to talk about that on the November 12th meeting, if that's to the liking of everyone.
So prepare the ordinance as we discussed?
Yeah, is your memo, I'm not sure.
Right, I had some suggestions in there. I will do that, and then that can, can come before you as a-
Clarifying language.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Could I, is that, if we, do we have to act twice on that? Is that a act then, or?
Yes, because it will be ordinance amendments.
So we'd have to act the 12th and then-
It'll be a first reading on the 12th, and then-
The next on the December, whatever that is. Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else for tonight?
Mayor moves to adjourn.
All right, let's do it. Any kids here to whack this gavel? Everybody's home.